Let's get this meeting started. This is the meeting of the Town of Cordermadera Town Council for August 21, 2019. Rebecca, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Bailey, councilmember Kuhnhardt.
Here.
Councilmember Rivasia.
Here.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Here.
Mayor Andrews.
Present. Okay, will you join me in the salute to the flag and flag treble allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Eli.
Hey.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
The first item is open time. If anyone has a comment or a question about items not listed elsewhere on the agenda, you have three minutes to speak. Anyone? So, I see no one stepping up, so we will go on to presentations. The first presentation is Citizen of the Year Award to John Lister. And I will read the first paragraph and then pass it down, okay? "Town of Cordermadera, commendation to John Lister for his service to the town of Cordermadera. Whereas John Lister has been a longstanding resident of the town of Cordermadera, giving generously of his time in and around the community, including past service as member of the Cordermadera Town Band, and his annual presence at the Cordermadera Oktoberfest where he participates as a strolling accordion player, delighting attendees with authentic German music and..."
Thank you. "Whereas Mr. Lister is a member of the Cordermadera Lions Club, currently serving as a director of the club, and is well-known in the community for hosting an annual Christmas caroling party with his wife Renee, which begins with hot soups and ends with a multi-block Whereas Mr. Lister initiated a grassroots effort to organize his neighbors in Lower Chapman Park into an active and successful neighborhood response group in order to help the neighborhood attain self-sufficiency for a span of three to five days immediately following a disaster, and currently serves on the Central Marin NRG Advisory Committee and...
Whereas Mr. Lister's artistic talent and community spirit led him to spearhead construction of the giant turkey through which visitors to the Cordermadera Town Center during the Thanksgiving season can donate non-perishable food items, and which, since its debut in 1992, has become a Cordermadera icon, bringing 4,000 to 6,000 pounds of donations annually to benefit the community through the San Francisco Marin Food Bank.
Now, therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Cordermadera does hereby present the 2019 Citizen of the Year Award to John Lister and expresses its profound appreciation for his significant and invaluable contributions to the town of Cordermadera, presented August 20, 2019. Yours.
All right.
Three minutes.
Well, first I want to say, see, I've been a... My parents moved here in '69. I got married at St. Patrick's in '78, and we took up residency here in '83. My three kids went to school here and loved everything about Cordermadera. And my mother precedes me as being both Citizen of the Year and Senior Volunteer of the Year. And I want to say thank you because my wife often says to me, "We're supposed to be retired. Why are you going to another meeting?" And I think maybe I get a little grace for next year. Thank you very much. And thank you to all the people that made the NRG so successful here in Lower Chapman Park.
I just wanted to say first, we were going to present this award to John Lister back in July, but for the first time in many decades, he was actually not in town for the Fourth of July Parade. But I have it on good authority that he will be representing his award in the Cordermadera Larkspur Fourth of July Parade next summer, so he will get to ride.
The next item of business is a PG&E presentation on medical baseline customers and public power shut-off program notifications. And if possible, let's just, after PG&E does our presentations, we'll allow questions and then not do comments at this time, but just answer questions, okay?
Thank you. Well, you're lucky to have people in town like Mr. Lister because when I was on the city council in Napa for eight years, that, those, I think if you just take that resolution and post that on the city website, people see, that's the kind of people that are in that town, there's a place that I want to go and visit and spend time. So, just post that with the Chamber of Commerce or other places.
Good idea.
So, good evening. My name is Mark Van Gorder. I, as I just mentioned, I live in the city of Napa. I work for Pacific Gas &amp; Electric and have been serving the North Bay area, which is Napa and Marin Counties. That's what we call our North Bay Division, excuse me, for the last six years. I apologize upfront. Everyone tells me allergy season is over. I don't believe it. So, I'm suffering a little bit from allergies. I apologize. So, I'm here tonight to talk about the Community Wildfire Safety Program. Thank you, Mayor and City Manager and other council members as well. For this time, I will try and go through the presentation somewhat quickly for the purposes of the mayor said, that we can get to some questions from either the council or community members. That said, just, you know, put your hand up if you'd like me to pause for a minute or something. So, I'm going to go through this rather quickly because all this slide does is tell you what we're going to tell you about in more detail in the other slides. But we'll be talking about the Safety Operations Center, our weather stations, and high-definition cameras, vegetation programs that we have. Thank you very much. Accelerated inspections, which I can go into more detail if you have questions. And probably the key interest here is turning off the power for public safety. So, we'll go through a number of these slides here. Again, we have a 24/7 during wildfire season Safety Operations Center that is based in San Francisco. It, you know, it looks sort of like a small, a mini NASA station with many monitors, people monitoring the weather, wind speeds, fuel conditions, coordinating with CAL FIRE, CAL OES, and if needs be, that when the time may come, talking with County Office of Emergency Services and others. There's a great, if you geek out on weather, when I was, back in the days when you had 1,400 bodmodums and things like that, I would spend half an hour waiting to download a radar picture. I don't know why. But today, it's much better. These, this whole presentation for the community, both here and who may be watching video on home, this has some terrific web links. This is mesowest.utah.edu. If you want to look at weather stations locally or around the state or in the western states, it's just a fantastic resource for information, also helpful in the winter time. Regarding our high-definition cameras, we're hoping to have 600 by 2022. We do have, it's not a slide, but it's a Word document that we can get to after the presentation that lists some of the locations where we have the high-definition cameras and where we have some of our own weather stations, though there are many weather stations that we don't own and control. Last week, I just happened to be checking in, you know, on my phone. I get the NICSIL alerts and got a NICSIL alert about a fire that had started in Lake County. I thought, gee, I wonder if you can see that from the cameras? And sure enough, I went to the alertwildfire.org, looked at the Lake County Canocti camera, and you could see the smoke. And thankfully, that was a 20 or 30-acre fire. It didn't grow more, but helpful in detecting fires early. Enhanced vegetation management, I'll go through this rather quickly. I do want to state PG&E is required and does regularly throughout Marin and our entire service territory, trim back vegetation away from our lines to make sure that there isn't limbs or trees falling onto it. That's normal. That's standard, so standard that most folks might not even really think too much about it. Enhanced vegetation management is when we're clearing out considerably larger distances from the trees, sorry, from the lines, up to 12 feet in trying to maintain those areas. That is only being performed in what we call, oh, sorry, what the California Public Utilities Commission calls Tier Two and Tier Three High Fire Threat Areas. Simply put, that's where the CPUC and CAL FIRE and PG&E and other utility entities have determined that we have facilities running through densely wooded, vegetated areas with, you know, where we have dead, dying, diseased trees that can easily blow over and limbs are dropping. So, that's where we're performing this work. I'll get to a map that kind of somewhat outlines the areas in just a bit. We're also inspecting these transmission towers. I think the most obvious ones that you can see are driving down Highway 37. They're just, they're just out there in the open, but they continue, and they continue straight on through here, you know, Santa Fel and down up into the Golden Gate National Recreation Area, where we discovered, if you read recently, about 10 towers that we're currently working on completely removing and repairing. And so, that's, that's part of this program, the Wildfire Safety Inspection Program. How are we inspecting them? Visually, we're walking, we're climbing, we're taking ATVs where needs be, performing aerial inspections with helicopters and drones and by any means possible. I haven't heard about horses yet, but I assume that's happening in some of the hills. We simply evaluate the towers. We create what we call A tags, B tags, and the prioritized work gets straight to the top and people begin working on those towers immediately. We are installing stronger, more resilient poles and covered power lines. It's going to take some time to complete that work, but our objective is to simply minimize the risk of ignition when an animal or a tree may fall or blow into the lines. And I can update you on areas where we may be performing that work going forward. I can certainly give that information to the city manager as we perform that work. If you'd like me to go into the details on this, I can. Simply stated, we have something called reclosers. They're fantastic in the wintertime. Something falls on the lines briefly, it may, you know, hit the lines a branch or something and bounce off or fall off. An animal may climb onto the lines or something of that nature. The lights dim or flicker and everyone wonders up, is the power going to go out? But it stays on. That's the recloser device, sending a pulse of energy to find out if there's something still on the lines. Very handy in the wintertime, not so helpful in the dry summer conditions time because it's sending a burst of electricity down the line to test. So, we disable them during the summertime for safety in these high-fire-threat areas. The point, the reason to point that out is not only the safety aspect of doing so, but in doing so, because they don't automatically continue sending electricity down the line, we have to patrol the lines to make sure that they are clear from vegetation. In Calistoga, when we had a public safety power shut-off event in 2018 around October, we shut the power off for about 36 to 48 hours, patrolled the lines, and there were multiple full trees blown down into the lines to the point that they had collapsed, the poles, the lines were on the ground. Sending the pulse of electricity up the line to test would not be helpful. And that's why we disabled them during this time of year, and then we'll re-enable them during the winter. So, talking about public safety power shut-offs, which I assume most people are most interested in, the conditions for the public safety power shut-off are red flag warnings, low humidity levels, forecasted winds of 25 up to 40, 25 up to 45 mile-per-hour gusts, dry fuel conditions, and then our folks reporting what they're actually seeing on the ground. All of that combined with what I mentioned earlier, communications with local Office of Emergency Services, local National Weather Service, which we do during wintertime storms or atmospheric river events, that sort of thing, and then eventually CAL OES and others, and then making a determination, if needs be, to shut off the power to prevent ignition. I don't think we have the Zoom-in map, but I believe the town clerk has this link. We can certainly post it on the city website. If we don't, we'll coordinate and I will get it for you. This is, you know, this is a Zoom out of California. For PG&E, which is roughly, roughly more than two-thirds of our state up here, 50% of our service territory is in a Tier Two or Tier Three, Tier Three being the highest threat, Tier Two being mildly lower. And then the white spaces are what they call Zone One. But the main point being is there are roughly 120 million dead, dying, or diseased trees in our area, well, in the state of California, for the other utilities. And we are doing our best quickly to perform that enhanced vegetation management to remove the trees away from the lines to give us that added level of protection. But these are the areas that we're looking at. The link that I mentioned, which I find to be a bit more handy, will allow council members, city staff, and the community to really zoom into a street level and find out, am I in this Tier Two, Tier Three area? And so, we'll, we'll get that link. We can post it to the website.
Basically, from the town limits from Christmas Tree Hill all the way around the bowl, all the way to the east side of Cordermadera is a Tier Two or Tier Three zone. You say that you're going to be shutting off the high-power lines first if they're going through those Tier Two and Tier Three. If you're further down the grid, how big a spillover will there be?
Okay. Next slide. But you're on target. You're tracking. Yeah. So, so as an example, June 8th, there was, there was a wind event. Thankfully, it was not tremendously strong as far as wind speeds are concerned. It was definitely up in the, in the 40s, high 30s and 40s. It was eastern, eastern county of Napa, dipped into Solano County and parts of Yolo. And then, and then together with that event, also up in the Sierra Foothills, we were able to isolate the area of impact to roughly 1,600 people for the county. So, we were able to isolate those lines, shut the power off to those people. The power total time off was roughly, I want to say 12 hours from the time to shut off and patrolling the lines back to restoring the power. In Calistoga, for the public safety power shut-off, their only source of power comes through these tier, they're, they're completely Tier Three. They have, you know, a bowl, it's the very, the very top of Napa Valley, and then it goes immediately up Mount St. Helena and the Vacas and over. So, in that case, the entire city was shut off from power. So, depending on the transmission lines, where the event takes place, so the location of the event, the duration of the event, the strength of the event, and again, when I say event, we're talking mostly about weather. Of all the factors that I mentioned earlier, the humidity and the fuel load and all those things, all critical, and no one component stands on its own, so I don't want to imply that wind is the sole thing that we're looking at. But my experience so far is that it is absolutely the driving force behind decisions for these public safety power shut-offs and where we might have those strong winds for prolonged periods and pinpointing if it's going to be a transmission line that might take out two or three cities, or if we can isolate it to the western side, you know, of a town, that it's just hard to know where and when. Was that driving it, your question?
Little bit, yeah.
Yeah, I can follow up more on that if there's a... So, we're monitoring the winds and we see something coming. In a perfect world, our objective with the Office of Emergency Services is to notify them, perfect world, 72 hours in advance, if we can get that much look ahead. I call that the watch. The warning to everyone would be about 48 hours in advance, and as much as we can. So, it's cascading communications. We want to make sure that our emergency partners are on board, informed, know that we're, what we're doing. Messaging will likely also be distributed, which I typically do for winter storms, to council members through the city managers, county supervisors as well, through, through the county administrative officer. And we will send 48-hour notifications, 24 hours, just before the electricity's turned Power's out, we wait, and then once the weather event is over, we begin patrolling to restore the weather, I mean, to restore the power as quickly as we possibly can. How do we notify people? Well, let me skip ahead. Many ways. I would say probably every way. Television, radio, text, email, Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, and kids know probably 10 other social media things that I don't know these days about how to, how to stay up to date. That said, for people like me who don't do Facebook or Twitter or other things that much, especially during these events, I encourage people to maybe have, you know, your car radio is a great source of information if the radio's not, you know, no way to communicate in the house, but there's some back-to-basics. I remember during the Loma Prieta earthquake, and the power was out and everything was gone, I went out into my truck and I turned on the radio station and they were reporting that the Bay Bridge had collapsed. So, they had information. At the beginning, it may not be perfect, but it's there, and then as time passed, we learn more specifically what's going on. That said, I also encourage folks to look into solar phone chargers. This time of year that we're talking about still is in the latter part of August and September and October, typically, they are fairly long sunny days, and so if you have a solar charger or a solar radio, it's not a bad recommendation for that. So, get the weather all clear. We patrol and inspect the lines. We isolate and repair the damage, isolating meaning that we hopefully can get most, if not all, of the, you know, 95% of the population back up and running while we work to restore those downed lines and poles, if they are, and then we notify the customers. We literally send texts and emails. I tend to think when the electricity comes back on, you kind of know it's, it's on. But that's what we do. For folks who have more questions, we have an 800 number. Again, this full presentation is linked to the city's agenda, so if you go to the city's website and download the agenda and click on this link, you can have this whole presentation. We have wildfire safety@pgne.com. You can email questions. You can call the 866-743-6589 with questions. I try to save paper where I can, as much as possible. Every document that we can share, every bit of information really is on the links available at pg.com/wildfiresafety. Just about anything that you'd need to know in addition to this specific information about, you know, how do I deal with generators, that sort of thing, is all available. I don't know if Rebecca, if we wanted to take just a real quick peek at the list of, where is it? The list of the high, yeah. So, the high-definition cameras, this, this is available to anyone in town who wants to see. This tells you where the locations are in Marin County and also the, the weather stations that we've installed in this area. So, we're adding more, but if you wanted to know specifically where, this is the list there. I'll probably pause and take questions?
Sure. Thank you so much for coming. Really appreciate it. I've actually been through this a couple of times. I'm on the Marin Ready Together Fire Group, and I just, I'm going to ask a question, a couple of questions. One of the things that came up is you guys haven't done this before, which, and I applaud you for taking the initiative to do this in Marin, but you can't really turn the lines back on until you do visual inspections, correct? And that's going to be pretty difficult in some places?
We will be visually, yeah. I mean, the short answer is yes. It would depend upon the area that we have that's impacted. So, I think as the city manager mentioned, a majority of Cordermadera is in this high-fire-threat district area. We would patrol those lines, and, and depending on where the event took place, that could take a while to complete. We're targeting, you know, we're targeting all crews to these areas, I shouldn't say all. We're really trying to send in reinforcements, pre-staging and preparing in advance of these events, so that we can quickly patrol and restore.
Right. But this could easily go on several days.
Absolutely.
If, if you've got to take the power down, by the time you actually visually inspect the lines after a high-wind incident, it would not be surprising for it to take three days, four days. You've set up to five days for power to come back on?
That, that's correct. I'd like to think that that's...
Hopefully it won't, but...
That's exactly right.
We need to be prepared for the worst.
Absolutely correct.
They want to make sure people are aware of what can happen with this.
Yes.
And, and you're making a special notification of people who have medical devices that need...
Yeah, and I...
You guys have a special program set for that?
We do. I will send, for some reason, I thought that slide was, was in this presentation. I'll have to talk to my assistant that helps prepare these. So, let me, if I can, briefly walk through that, because I think it's rather robust.
And it's, I think it's really important.
Sure, absolutely. And again, all of these documents, I will get you. I thought we had it in this presentation, so, so since you don't have it, I will make sure that the clerk, the town clerk receives these documents and maybe can post, maybe we get a repository going of documents.
Is there something I can go through right now?
Unfortunately, I don't think it's, it's on this, on these slides, but let me talk through it and know that there is a, you know, a two-pager about, if you want to scroll through, I don't know, that other document you just had, I don't think it's there. So, let me talk through it and know that I will send the documents, and if there's a way to put them available through the, through the city link, there's a process. So, we do have means, I think it has two benefits. For people who have doctor-required devices that require electricity, so whether that be an electric wheelchair, or a CPAP machine, or some other electric-dependent device, we have a program that will, A, help those customers save energy by, by applying for this program that we have, the medical baseline program, but also, when enlisting or enrolling in that program, whether or not you're a direct PG&E customer, and I'll get to that in just a second, regardless, if you have a need for that equipment and you enroll in our medical baseline program, you will get that phone call. You will get that notification. You'll get the email. You'll get the text message, et cetera. Really quick, I just wanted to note that there are some folks who aren't the customer of record. Maybe you are living in a mobile home community, or you're living in a multi-unit apartment complex and there's one meter that serves the remainder of the customers. The property owner or whoever pays that bill to PG&E is what we would think of as being the customer, but we know that what we call behind the meter, there may be four, eight, or 100 or more people, right? So, we care about the people. I don't think too much about the meter. So, so, if we're having a public safety power shut-off event and we know the location of the folks who may have this medical, durable medical equipment, and we're also trying to work with Health and Human Services, Office of Emergency Services, and others to try and make sure that we have a clear line into who those people are and where they live, we will get them into our database. We will contact them by phone, email, text, and we'll ask, please reply, please respond, press one, hit yes, something, let us know you got the message. If they don't get that message through those means, eventually, we will send someone out to knock on the door.
Right.
That's why the address is important.
Right.
So, if they can't communicate back to us for whatever reason, we will go knock on the door, and if for any reason they're not at home, and of course, we understand, that may take five or 10 minutes to wait for them to get to the door, especially if you have some mobility challenges otherwise. And then if they don't answer at all, then we leave a door hanger that says, "Look, we're expecting a public safety power shut-off. If you're out shopping, family, otherwise, come home and you get that," then that's the notification that we can provide. So, those are the, that's our way of reaching out to, you know, access and functional needs of people in the community.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that. And then, this happened in Novato a couple of months ago, I guess. There was a temporary shutdown. I was told by the fire chief up there.
I don't recall having a public safety power shut-off. We have power outages frequently. Anybody here have a power outage recently?
I thought it was a shut-off. I could have it wrong. Yeah, we had one. But...
You know what? We already had our issue.
Well, that's what I was just going to mention is, Stan, thank you so much for coming. I talked to the fire chief in Novato about it. It happened in the middle of the day. Traffic was completely locked into the shopping center. And among other things that happened, because all the traffic lights went down, right? So we need to really be thinking about this stuff. And Hopmunk Tavern was serving lunch, and their fans were shut off, and they had the grill going, and the fire was going, and the smoke went up and set off the fire alarms. And the fire trucks were trying to get into Hopmunk Tavern even though they didn't need to, but they couldn't because the traffic was all backed up. It was just crazy. So the more notification we can get about these things happening. And the other thing, I just, I guess, you didn't go through the weather slide, but your weather condition slide?
Yeah.
That's pretty much the month of September and October, right? I mean, high-wind advisory, high temperature, low humidity. I mean, that's, so, in your opinion, is it a pretty high likelihood that we're going to have this?
In my experience, let's say that. I'm not a meteorologist. I don't play one on TV. I just know that those have been the months. But if we look back at some of the fires that we had in 18, the Mendocino Lake County Complex, I've been at the base camps of most of these events. And I was talking with, you know, CAL FIRE and others, well, this will be wrapped up pretty soon. This won't take long. And then, out of nowhere, it's the biggest event that they've had so far. So opinions and experience, I just don't know these days. And every Office of Emergency Services director, CAL FIRE leader or other folks, you know, I mean, you've heard it all in the news. Everyone has. Biggest fire we've ever seen, never seen anything like this before, never seen conditions like this before, total erratic, unexpected fire activity, all driven by the weather conditions, and in most cases, by the wind. So I get real cautious about opinions and experience because I really don't know what's around the corner.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Mark, for this. And of course, ignition can happen from anything. It can happen from an axe striking metal. It can happen from a piece of equipment. It's not necessarily power lines going down, right?
That's very true.
I'm going to ask a little bit about cause, just stepping back for a second. All these conditions that you're discussing, and fire season used to be September, October, it's now May through December, basically. But heat, 120 million dying trees, dry understory, longer fire season, even the high winds are all climate-related changes. Can you talk to us a little bit about the progress that PG&E is making, moving away from the fossil fuels that are causing overloading of carbon dioxide and climate change?
Well, without avoiding your question, I didn't come here prepared tonight to speak with a lot of data on that. That said, the company is, well, let me back up. When I was asked to join the company, my mission when I was on the city council, LEED-certified Platinum, solar panels on everything, don't cut a tree down, you know, sometimes you realize where you have to make your sacrifices for your personal beliefs, for the good of the community. So that's where I come from. And I told them that when I joined the company. You know, climate change is something I've been following since 1995 and believe in strongly. So again, not avoiding your question, the company is dedicated to, and I drive my electric vehicle here, I'm not sure I'm going to make it back unless I stop over here at the shopping mall and charge up again. So the company is committed to getting more chargers out, and supporting electric and hybrid vehicles, and reducing the use of fossil fuels, and doing everything that it can. But to get to your point of what all is the company doing, which is, I think, your question, I'd have to get you another presentation that really dives into metric tons that we're trying to save, and GHG reductions and that sort of thing, and reducing carbon footprints, and grants, and other things available to communities. I don't have that tonight.
Okay. Well, you're doing better than the 2020 goal, by the way, of over 33%, but there's still a long ways to go.
There's a long global way to go.
Related, it's actually a related question, which is, a lot of people are dealing with outages and the threat of outages by buying one or another kind of generator. Any recommendations on the best type of generator that won't itself contribute to the problem?
Sure. So I don't recommend generators. The website, the wildfire safety website, has links that talks about generators, how to determine what the best generator is. And so, and it lists a number of different links that you can click on to look at various generators and generator providers, and all that sort of stuff. I would strongly suggest that everyone who may be interested in purchasing a generator, really understand what they're doing, know the dangers of, know not to operate an electric or gas-fueled, sorry, a gas-fueled generator inside the home for CO2 poisoning, that sort of thing. I was asked a question by Frank Cox, of course, from the Disaster Citizen Court Council. Well, what about the person that's outside on their deck pouring gasoline into their generator, and it gets on the deck, and it catches fire, and the deck starts on fire? And that sounded horrible. Don't bring your generator out to the wooden deck and try not to spill the fuel and light it. Those kinds of things, I would suggest if you can afford it, they're more expensive, some of them, but battery, you know, the battery generators. But those are rather costly, and, you know, the other gas-fuel generators are more affordable, and some people may need to get those.
Solar plus batteries is a big answer.
Can I just add something to that? I was in a disaster prep meeting, and we had the fire battalion chief there. And that question came up, what should we encourage people to get generators? And he said, similar to something what you said, he said, I don't know if encouraging people to be pouring gasoline into a generator on a redwood deck in the middle of the night during high-wind advisories is such a great idea. And we all kind of went, oh, okay.
Well, and...
And there are natural gas generators, there's solar, there's other alternatives, but...
And I haven't seen a...
You need to be careful about how we do this.
I haven't been to a presentation yet where anyone has suggested that someone do those things. So I think there is amount of common sense that people really need to read the manuals, understand the safety and precautions, determine whether or not that really is the best thing for them to have the gas-fuel generator, and follow the safety measures for sure. That's, you've got to do that.
Well, as someone who's lived through several hurricanes, and spent my boyhood in Florida, you'd be amazed at the stupidity that, I mean, it's raining, so they bring it into the garage, okay? And the neighbors complain about the noise, so they bring it into the garage. And, you know, it's astounding. One question I do have is, in terms of sort of stores and facilities and stuff like that, I can think of a few stores that I would want to have power. Are you making any provision to provide backup power, or helping them do it, you know, such as like, once all the frozen food in my house goes bad and I pitch it out, I want to go to the grocery, who will have had to pitch everything out because they don't have battery backup?
Our objective, the weather will drive it. Our objective is to restore power rapidly, you know. In the one case, we had six hours. You know, maybe 12 hours to get the power restored, could be 18 hours. I think the objective is to mobilize the resources. I think the real driver on this would be two, three windy days. That, to me, is going to be the determinant of how long it will take. I don't believe that it's going to be how long it's going to take our crews to mobilize and get the power restored. That said, so, you know, I grew up, I guess, in rural Sebastopol. I remember the power would go out frequently, and it would be out for a day, a day and a half. Now, I'm really dating myself, and kerosene lamps and candles, and we cooked on an actual wood stove fire. I'm not a grandpa yet, but I probably sound like one. And we survived. We made it. We kept the refrigerator and the freezer closed, and only opened it when we need it. And I missed the final season of MASH because of an outage, but we did survive. That was rough, rough. So, but my point is, if we get into the three-days weather event, even if we can come in and get things back up and running in 12 hours or so, that's going to be a problem. And there isn't, it would be too large. We don't have generation for the gas stations, and the grocery stores, and everything else. And frankly, you know, if we had that, we would probably prioritize other facilities that are even more critical than those.
Okay.
Other questions?
No questions.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So just one sort of more overarching question. It seems that the whole concept of the public safety power shut-off is sort of premised on the unfortunate fact that PG&E's infrastructure is in such a state that, in certain conditions, it's not safe to transmit power. Would you say that PG&E is focused on rectifying that situation, and I would say increasing the range of weather conditions in which it's safe to transmit power as sort of a more strategic goal?
Well, yes. I'm going to be real direct in my answer. I don't know what other people's experience is, but just last week, a large branch, 18 inches in diameter, broke off the tree of my neighbor's house just across the street, and took out his service line to his house. Thankfully, the branches had been brought below the power lines that were above. And the city and the town did a great job of coming in and making it safe, removing the tree, this tree branch, one branch, right, that took his service drop. And so, the challenge is, we have a lot of vegetation that has grown up over time. We have a lot of development that has moved out into rural or wild urban, you know, wildland-urban interface areas. We are required, and happily, serve those customers, but required. When planning departments and counties and cities agree to continue expanding the footprint further out, and we have transmission towers, but more importantly, just regular distribution lines coming through, I don't find many people who support removing every 50-foot or 100-foot tree away from our electric lines, right? Because all it has to do is follow that direction. No one wants to do that. I don't want to do that. It would be vast swaths of forest that, to assure 100%. So where we can, we are taking strong looks at undergrounding. I know that we're taking a look at that here by the request of some folks and other places. We are looking at creating some areas where we can provide generation, right? So if we have to shut down the power that comes into the city of Calistoga, we might be able to generate with 10 or so generators for three or four days, enough power to power 60% or 70% of the city. So to your point, the gas stations and the grocery stores or whatnot, those essential facilities. But the inspections and the reconstruction program that I mentioned earlier is part of the program to fix those towers or facilities that need to be repaired. But I think ultimately, long-term, trees fall over, and we will not be the source of ignition again. You know, that is my greatest hope. We are never, ever the source of ignition again. And we are going to have to shut the power off for the foreseeable future, or remove all possible threat of something falling on our lines and taking the power lines down to the ground. Is that answer?
Yeah, yeah. I think you got to the part of the question. Thank you.
And would you be available to answer questions?
Yeah, absolutely.
Can I ask that one question?
Yes.
Adam, I don't want to put you on the spot. I normally warn you if I'm going to ask a question in a meeting. How much of the town's in the wildland-urban interface? How many households, or what percentage? I know it's...
About 2,000.
I was going to say, I thought it was 2,000 households. Is that...
40%.
Is in the wildland-urban interface, which is where the problem is. Okay.
I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Please step up to the podium, please. And you've got three minutes or less questions.
I actually have Larkspur resident, but on an NRG, and we're having a meeting next week, so I thought I would attend tonight. So my question would be to you, you had just brought up the fact that PG&E is going around and trimming the PG&E lines, or where the trees are. In a case where I live in a forest up here, we have PG&E coming out and trimming some of those lines where the trees are over the lines. But the minute it gets into an individual's property, my question to PG&E was, well, what about that big branch that's hanging on someone's electrical wire? What is PG&E doing to educate those people that they have to get that line cleared? Because when I asked the PG&E person, what about clearing that? He said, we do not step on private property. That's up to the individual to take care of.
Can you answer?
Can you answer? Okay.
Yeah, I want to answer that. That is a good question, and a somewhat concerning question. So maybe if we could go back to the slide that shows the email and the phone number. I would love you, or anyone, to call or email and contact PG&E. So my hope, I'm hoping, that whoever said that might have been referring to what we refer to as the service drop. So if we go down the streets and we see the electric power lines on the wooden poles, that's what we call the distribution. And then from each one, the line comes down to the home into the weatherhead, and that's what we would call a service drop. We do not remove vegetation around the service drop. So I believe that, that is my hope. I'm sorry, mayor, I should be directing back to you. I apologize. But I will try and answer your question. So if that's the case, calling this number, or calling our 800 number, we will schedule one of our team members to come to a person's home, disconnect the power, and allow your, you know, your arborist or vegetation crew, or even perhaps yourself, depending on how much vegetation it is, to remove that vegetation safely while the power's turned off, make a phone call back to PG&E at these numbers. We'll send somebody back out to reconnect the power. It is not the case, should not be the case, that trees that are on a person's private property, but growing up into or near our major serving lines, our primary or secondary lines, running down the street, pole to pole to pole to pole. In other words, not the service drops. If there's trees or vegetation that's growing up, even if it's on private property, we will come and address that. Our primary objective is the tier-two and tier-three areas. So every now and then, someone wants to remove a tree that's growing up into the lines. We will definitely come and make it safe and clear the vegetation, like I mentioned on our regular performance, but may not take the whole tree down. The customer may have to pay for that if it's not in this tier-three, tier-two zone. Is that...
Yeah, thank you. I just thought that that was rather dangerous, that these people were told, it's not their responsibility. So those people did have some, this neighbor behind me, had someone come out and trim the tree, that line was never disconnected.
So...
Unfortunately, nothing happened.
Yeah, I would like to say, just to reiterate, service drops. Call the number that we have. Our folks will come. Never, never approach our electric lines, and never go to use near our service drop to cut, you know, to cut anything. Call 911 if there's a wire down or a tree down, and make sure that the power is turned off by a PG&E representative who comes to the home and gives you the okay, and then you can call the arborist, or you can clear it yourself. And it's unfortunate. I'm sorry to hear if that was the case. But what I've told you is the correct way to do it.
Right. Anybody else have questions? If you could line up, so I can get through this.
Bill Rostenberg from Greenbrier. I appreciate the answer you just gave. I wish that's how it worked. About a year and a half ago...
Questions?
What's your question?
I'm going to get to it.
Okay. Okay.
About a year and a half ago, at 2:00 in the morning, I heard a crunch. And I expected, in the daylight, I'd see a branch falling down. What had happened is a 40-foot live oak that was right up near my house fell. Fortunately, didn't hit my house and did not hit my neighbor's house. It did land on your distribution lines, not, not the line from the telephone pole to my house, but the lines from telephone pole to telephone pole to telephone pole. Did not hit the high, high voltage. It hit the medium voltage lines. I called PG&E. No fewer than 20 people came out to my house. Half, I believe, were PG&E and half were arborists that work with PG&E. And studied it for about 45 minutes and finally left and said, "You're on your own." And I was told, since the tree originated on my property, and I understand my property's my responsibility, I was told to hire someone and have them remove the tree, which was in your wires. Nobody offered to turn the power off. And my question is, is that something I should expect if that were to happen again? Was that, was that based on the sketchy description that I described? Is that something that I should expect to have a similar answer again in the future? Should I lose another tree on your distribution lines?
Okay, actually, next question.
This is not a complacent.
Next question?
Lucinda Smith, up on Alta Way, which I think is definitely in the tier three zone. My question is about the loss of power just last week, which was a total surprise. And I understand that it was because of some project that was ongoing, but didn't ever get very much clarification on it. I did go through the process of calling PG&E, notifying them. They never, were going to get back to me because I followed all those prompts. So there's a lack of communication that comes, that, from a customer's service standpoint because I never got a call back. I'm still waiting for a call back to tell me that-
What's your question, please?
Customer service. It is not acceptable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and I think that we need to let PG&E know so that they can address the problem.
I know. Okay. Next question? No, the problem is, this was supposed to be like a 20-minute presentation. It's going on an hour.
Let Teresa speak. Let Teresa speak.
Okay. If you can answer the question so far and just-
Absolutely. I'll, I'll try to make the brief. Absolutely. Sorry. Briefly, I will, again, I will send the city clerk some links. So I'm not avoiding the question. I'll answer the question. I don't know the history or why or what took place, so I can't speak to the specific situation. Our, my recommendation is that if you see power lines down from a tree or a car or anything else, call 911. The dispatcher should contact PG&E to mobilize our folks. And again, I don't know the details of what happened, but you know, if you call, if wires down, stay away, call 911, and the city staff and our folks will work, work that out. And if, and if there's a tree left and people are claiming the power is still energized, your city manager or police chief or fire chief will contact me or some of our higher level folks and will take care of it. So that's that on the customer service. Again, if, if people will Google or take a look, we have on our website, I encourage everyone to sign up, if you go to pgne.com, sign up and give us your contact information, email, text messages. We will absolutely, and I know because I'm signed up myself and I get alerts when there's power outages in my neighborhood. I'm alerted when, when the power's gone out, how long they expect it to be out, when they expect it to be restored, that sort of thing. I do understand the frustration of calling our 800 number during events where there's, you know, 50, 60,000 people without power and, and the customer service line is inundated. And, and I understand that you may not have received a call back, and I apologize for that. People should sign up and get their customer information and contact information into us. And again, I'll provide those links to the city clerk.
And Mr. Mayor, I just want to add that, you know, Mark's been great. He's very responsive. You know, there's still a lot of unknowns with the power shut offs, as we know, and so there's going to be a lot of questions, not just for the council and staff, but our community. Please, you know, reach out to the, to your, your staff, the residents in Corder Madera. We'll facilitate those answers through Mark. There's going to be a lot more questions coming up. That first shut off is going to answer a lot of questions for us, but it's also going to raise a lot. And so we're just going to have to work through this. And as we sent out on the agenda, we want to make people aware of this. There's a lot of information on the website. Please go to it. But then again, if you have any questions, please direct that to, 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 to the staff. And, and we're going to work with you quickly to work through that. We're not going to solve the problems and really get a lot of answers tonight. What you heard is what we know. And unfortunately, we're going to have to be as prepared as possible, so just hang in there.
Any other short questions?
Concerns cell, cell towers.
Next up.
Not on the agenda yet.
That, that's later up on the agenda.
Well, it's concerning electricity.
Later.
Power shut off or?
Yeah, during an outage.
So both PG&E and the state have been working with cellular service providers. And they are working now to have, make sure that they are fueled and ready to go. I think there's a lot more coordination, and you're right, the power could be turned off. But they, they are, after the, the North Bay fires and, and all, a lot of, all, if not all, a lot of the cellular towers went down, they're much more coordinated. I'll let, I'll let cellphone providers or cellular providers speak for themselves. I will take this moment to encourage people to use, if the cell service is down, go to your radios. Just don't forget, the radios are a very good source. You have KWMR here, and they will be broadcasting information as well as others.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Close this and then I'll start our consent calendar. The purpose of the consent calendar is to group together items which are routine or have been discussed previously and do not require further discussion. They will be approved by a single motion. Any member of the town council, town staff, or public may request removal of an item for discussion. Rescheduling the item will be at the discretion of the mayor and the town council. Any motions?
I'll move to approve items 4A through 4F.
Second.
Councilmember Bailey. Councilmember Kuhnhardt.
Yes.
Councilmember Ovazia.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Mayor Andrews.
Yes. The next item, first business item is 6A, consideration and possible adoption of Resolution 36/2019, implementing provisions of the municipal code, Chapter 12-38, by establishing town policy for application requirements, review procedures, and evaluation criteria for right-of-way agreement applications for small cell wireless communications facilities. Adam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. As you just mentioned, we are requesting this evening that the town council consider and possibly adopt, and, and in fact, the staff is recommending that the town council adopt Resolution Number 36/2019, which is Attachment 1 to the staff report for this item. This is a resolution that would implement provisions of the municipal code, specifically in Chapter 12 dot 38, and it would establish town policy for application requirements, review procedures, design standards, and evaluation criteria for right-of-way agreements for small cell wireless communication facilities. This item tonight really follows up on a discussion and direction provided by the town council at its October 2, 2018 town council meeting, where the town council requested that staff explore opportunities to update, I'm sorry, update town policies related to the evaluation of applications for small cell wireless facilities in the public right-of-way. At that meeting, staff explained that the town could not impose a moratorium prohibiting the installation of small cell wireless facilities in town, and that it could not require standards or criteria that would have the effect of prohibiting the deployment or installation of small cell wireless facilities in town. Further, we discussed that the town cannot hold applicants to a stricter emission standard for radio frequency or electromagnetic wave frequency than required by federal regulations. So with that, and, and sort of the direction provided by the town council at that meeting, subsequently, staff reviewed our existing municipal code, Chapter 12 dot 38, which regulates the town's streets and sidewalks, sometimes referred to as the public right-of-way. And these regulations require entities seeking to place or install or essentially put anything in the public right-of-way, including wireless communication facilities. They, that applications need to be made by applicants and be subject to an approved right-of-way agreement. Staff returned to the town council in January earlier this year and confirmed that the existing ordinance required applicants to indemnify the town. This was one of the council's requests that coming from the October meeting as well. But we also recommended that the existing ordinance in 1238 be updated to first clarify that the owner of the facility, if different from the applicant, would be response, be a responsible party to any approved agreement, and also allow the town manager, his or her designated, to deny or approve the public right-of-way, I'm sorry, the right-of-way agreement as a way to comply with the expedited timeframes and requirements for decisions on small cell wireless facilities. The town council adopted Ordinance 982 on February 5, 2019, which updated Chapter 1238 with these amendments that just went over. Staff, since the October meeting, has also continued to monitor other local ordinance updates, which was also something that was requested. And when the county of Marin just recently went forward with their policy updates for small cell wireless facilities in July of just last month, staff felt it was a, a good time for the town to move forward as well, given primarily the town's alignment with the county and ongoing litigation, challenging FCC rules that drastically reduce local agencies' discretion in determining whether to approve small cell facilities in the public right-of-way. Therefore, staff, to the extent practical, has mirrored the county of Marin's policy, which is included as Exhibit A to Attachment 1 in your staff reports. Sorry, Exhibit A to Resolution 36/2019 in Attachment 1. And this policy, as expressed in the, in the title of this item and the subject heading, it really sets the application requirements, the review procedures, the design standards, and the evaluation criteria specific to right-of-way agreements for small cell wireless facilities. So it essentially, Chapter 1238 already requires that we get an approved, or set, get an application for a right-of-way agreement. So our current municipal code already requires that. This policy would sort of supplement or implement those requirements specifically for small cell wireless facility right-of-way agreements. We note that the proposed policy, if adopted by the town council, would become effective immediately, since this is a resolution and not an ordinance. And I think, you know, we feel it's advantageous, given the current volatility in the regulatory environment related to small cell wireless facilities. So with that, really happy to answer questions about the policy itself or other questions you may have. But again, this would go into effect, I think currently, we do not have, just to be clear, we do not have specific policies or how to review applications for small cell wireless facilities in the public right-of-way. We do have an ordinance related to how to address applications for small cell wireless facilities on private properties in our zoning districts, but that's regulated by our zoning ordinance in Chapter 18 of our municipal code.
So this is actually giving us the ability to regulate this, right?
Yes.
Isn't that another way to think about this? Because we did get some public comments saying that we're allowing-
Absolutely.
And, and, and it's the opposite. This is actually regulation that lets us control this, right? I mean, that was my interpretation in reading it, so I'm-
Correct. We don't, no, we don't. And as we explained, I think in October, while we do have current regulations related to small cell wireless facilities in the, in our private property, that ordinance expressly excluded the public right-of-way from that ordinance. So we didn't have, and we, we don't have currently today, regulations specific to these facilities in our public right-of-way, and that's what we're trying to implement here with this resolution, draft resolution.
And it makes us consistent with the county.
Makes us consistent with the county, which I think, not only, I mentioned, given the current ongoing litigation, which they're a part of as well, but also somewhat advantageous from an administration standpoint as well, and given that, you know, implementing and administering this, this policy, we can, we can look to, you know, a partner in, in the county in that as well, just in how they're, you know, dealing with different applicants and whatnot through that policy.
This actually gives us the ability to regulate this in a way that we haven't had before.
That's correct.
So this is a step forward by, I think, by what most people would consider.
We intend it to be that. I understand, we got the same email, and I think that's, you know, there could, a different viewpoint was expressed there, but I think staff clearly feels that this is-
I just wanted to confirm that. And also, we are in a lawsuit already on this. We're trying to fight this.
So it's another, yes, there's, there's been several actions, I think, by this town council. This is another one, and I think a significant one, and sort of at least, you know, requiring a significant amount of information from applicants, and also putting forth criteria on which, you know, the town would evaluate applications for where these go, the design standards. We had no design standards for public right-of-way in terms of, you know, obviously, how they're attached and what they look like and aesthetics and things like that as well, so.
So we're actually getting in front of this.
Yes, we had, since, and, and to note, I, on that front, we had an application in October, we, I think we noted at that meeting that there was an application pending. That had subsequently been withdrawn. We currently have no other applications in the public right-of-way for small cell wireless facilities. And if this goes into effect, you know, it would be immediate, so those applications, should they come in? And there have been questions, obviously, you know, but should they come in, they'd be subject to this policy immediately.
Thank you.
Couple of real specific things. Thank you, Adam. Are the standards of 1,500-foot distance, cell to cell, coming from the county? Is that the county standard?
Yes, that was taken from the county. There's a couple of spacing, design standards.
One of them is 1,500-foot radius from a daycare center. And I, I guess a question I have is, what counts as a daycare center? We have dozens of daycare centers in our town.
No, it's, it's a specific, it's actually a more defined facility, and the definition is by, it's not sort of the family home daycare facility. It's an actual day, a center itself as defined by, I think, the state.
And, and when one sets about saying, well, 1,000 feet from cell to cell, small cell to small cell, is that per provider? So that you could have two or three providers, and it's actually at point number 500 and 1,000 and 1,500 and 2,000, and also inter, but you're keeping one provider 1,000 feet apart, but other providers are putting them in? And is that-
It's not written that way now, so we would not, under the current ordinance, that would not be the standard. You know, so that, I, I do want to mention clearly, the, these spacing requirements, we've had some conversations about them in the past and how they relate to sort of the, the recent FCC orders, which obviously are, are being challenged. But there is an exemption provision in this policy that allows, should that run up, you know, should somebody, an applicant want to say, that that effectively prohibits an applicant from locating a small cell wireless facility in the- applicant from locating a small cell wireless facility in the town of Corder Madera, there is a process that allows somebody to apply for that exemption, which we feel is necessary. That's the same thing the county has done as well.
And is, I think, my last technique, do you happen to know whether these small cell towers or transmission devices are fed by fiber optic cable?
You know, I think, I, I'm not going to give you the, speculate on that. I, I think, I don't know offhand myself. I think it is the case, though, that some of them are. We've seen some applications for fiber optic cable in the, in the public right-of-way recently, and, and they've, they've sort of let us know that it's in anticipation of some of these small cell wireless facilities, but they are separate and apart from the actual facilities themselves, even though it's infrastructure.
It can also serve home computers.
Yeah, exactly.
So there is a, one provider has put fiber optic cable to the top of Christmas Tree Hill, for example, and the crews doing it told one of us that it's got nothing to do with 5G, and told another one of us in the room that it's absolutely in preparation for 5G.
Right. It's sort of similar to what we've been told as well.
But they can't do the 5G without coming back and filing an application under this.
Correct.
Thank you.
Well, and I just, yeah, I just want to be careful about the 5G and associating that with, with small cell wireless facilities. There are small cell wireless facilities that frankly aren't operating 5G technology as well. They're operating 4G technology and so on. So it's, you know, to conflate them exactly isn't entirely correct, so it's just...
One of the things, last comment, one of the things that I like most about what you've done is, no more than one small cell wireless facility shall be installed per Otherwise, you're going to have just this forest. Thank you.
Thank you. In general, given the FCC's, in my opinion, absurd restrictions that they've placed on town's ability to regulate the deployment of 5G or small cell technology within their municipal limits, would you say that this policy that we're looking at adopting here protects to the fullest extent enforceable under current law, Corder Madera's prerogative over its public right-of-way?
I think that's a challenging question. I don't know, think we know exactly where that line is.
Sure, okay, fair, fair point.
But, but we think it's, you know, that's all in line with what we were sort of attempting to do with this, and also consistent with, you know, another jurisdiction that was part of the same ongoing litigation. I could see our town attorney wanting to speak, so I'll defer to her on the rest of this answer.
I actually just wanted to supplement the answer, and as the council is aware, there is pending litigation over the validity and the scope of the FCC order, and the town of Corder Madera is one of many municipalities across the nation challenging the FCC order. But the FCC order is, does impose significant limitations, and I think the county has spent a lot of time crafting something that allows the jurisdictions to proceed in a way that works with the order that is currently in effect. But at the same time, like, the town is proceeding to challenge that order.
Understood. Thank you. So I guess I'll just rephrase my question in a way that, that's, requires less, like, legalistic dancing there. Would you say that this is an aggressive small cell policy that we're putting into place here? In your opinion, based on what we see throughout the rest of Marin County, throughout, you know, other municipalities in the county, and based on whatever you may be aware of nationwide, would you say that this is sort of a strong, a coming out strong here, or would you say that this is more cautious?
No, I, I would, I would say it's relatively strong. I, you know, I don't, I don't know the full spectrum of where other ordinances are. We've seen some that, you know, maybe have some additional requirements, but, that we haven't put in here. But I think we feel that it's definitely much stronger than anything we currently have. We think it's good to be aligned with others who have been through the process, and, and clearly has a number of hurdles, if that's a sign of being a strong ordinance here. But it's hard to put, it's just hard for me to put it on the spectrum.
Sure, sure, okay, that's fine. Thank you. The other question, this is for my fellow council members as much as staff, looking at page 15 of the, of the policy, that's the Exhibit A to the resolution, looking at page 15, under the list of least preferred locations within the public right-of-way, we're saying that we're looking for a 1,500-foot radius around these locations. I would suggest, or request that we add medical facilities to this list? So we've got, right now, we've got daycare centers and/or public-private schools, residential sites, mixed use with residential, and, what do you think?
If I may comment on that just for a second. So one of the, we call out specifically these daycare centers and these schools, but they are specifically tied to certain definitions that are either in the Health and Safety Code or in the California, from the California Department of Education. So if you wanted to do that, I would recommend trying to find a specific definition to tie that to, because that could otherwise lead to some ambiguity.
Right.
And just on that note, we can also, just because this is one of the reasons why I think it's advantageous under the, the resolution structure that we have here, and a policy structure, is that it can be relatively easily amended by resolution again in the future if, if need be. So, but nonetheless, I just wondered, on your first point, just in terms of tying it to a specific definition that would be...
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, doing that in the, in the legally correct and appropriate way.
If I may, through the mayor? I will add that, that this is a rapidly changing area of the law, and there is active litigation. And so the, by structuring this through a resolution, you are able to make changes that staff, you may ask staff to research, like the one that just came up, on the medical issues, but it also allows the council to be very nimble and come back and make changes that go into effect immediately, should there be a change in the law. So again, having a resolution in front of you allows you to be nimble, both for purposes of taking maybe a different look at this later, but also in terms of legal compliance.
Sure, thank you.
Okay.
So that was a policy question for you guys, though. How would you feel about potentially adding medical facilities to our list of least preferred?
What do you think, what are you thinking, public and private hospitals? Or are you thinking doctor's offices, dentist's offices? What are you, what's a medical facility?
I think that would be something that we would look to the, to the code for definition.
I think we should amend, we should decide whether we can live with this as is, and then, at a future council meeting, bring refinements, which I agree, medical facilities is probably a useful refinement, okay?
Okay.
It, it brings up another question, which is, what other jurisdictions close by us are doing the same as we are doing? We're following the county. Is Larkspur on board with this? What's, what's happening at Mill Valley?
I can come back and provide you with their ordinances. They have adopted, you know, variations on sort of similar types of policies, application requirements, just specifying those application requirements, procedural requirements in terms of review, setting criteria. And I think it's just a matter, you know, they all have a little bit different, maybe they'll be setting more strict sort of standards from a locational standpoint, but more relaxed on other, you know, pieces of what's required in terms of an application. So they're, you know, they're not, no, I haven't seen that each jurisdiction is sort of adopting the same exact policy, other than, you know...
Are we going to public comment or...
Well, I've got some questions, okay. One, the daycare center, as I recall, daycare centers are referred to in our cannabis ordinance. Is the definition the same between those two ordinances? And do we want to think about making them consistent, so we only, we only define it once in our code?
I, I, there, I'm not certain that it is the same definition. The definition, the cannabis ordinance, is driven by MRSA and ALMA, which are synced together by legislation. And so whether that tracks back to the same definition, we would need to take a look at. But there are some requirements in state law about the degree to which you have, there has to be an offset for purposes of cannabis-related businesses. So it may or may not be the same definition, but certainly that's something that staff could explore, either if you decide to introduce this ordinance, this resolution, or a version of this resolution, and direct staff to come back with some options, that, that can certainly be something that staff can explore.
Okay, good. My next question is, I'm not certain where in this to put it, but general heading would be ADA problems. If you wander around town, you'll find that it's not uncommon to have a sidewalk with a telephone pole in the middle of it.
Yep.
And so you literally, if, you know, if you turn sideways, you can get by it, but if you're in any way impaired, you're blocked. And so I'm just wondering, can we put in here in terms of citing, if they were replacing or anything like that, basically require whoever wants to add this to move the blasted poles?
Whoever wants, sorry, as part of a wireless application to move a pole out of the...
No, no, what I mean is, if they come in and say they want to add anything onto an existing pole that's sitting in the middle of the sidewalk.
Right.
We tell them, move the pole, get back to us, okay? Don't add any more equipment on a pole that's already out of ADA compliance.
I mean, it's sort of the same principle as when you say, you know, if your house is out of compliance with certain codes and you do X amount of work on it, you've got to bring it into compliance with these other building codes.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, our, our current, Chapter 1238, our current municipal code, chapter for right-of-way agreements for any facility that someone wants to propose in the, in the public right-of-way, definitely has the ability for, as part of that process, to review the placement and location of those, any sort of facility, and its effect on ADA. I think what you're asking, though, is a little bit different in that, and I think it's a good analogy, actually, Councilman Beckman makes, does this sort of additional capacity on the, on the pole sort of trigger some sort of, or can we require some sort of, you know, compliance with other, otherwise in compliant code violation? It would be something we'd have to research further, I think. I think one of the, one of the complications is those are dependent, you know, these, a lot of these poles are owned by PG&E, and so there are also federal regulations regarding the agreements between PG&E and these small cell wireless facilities. And I'm not, you know, I'm not sure, but it's something we could research potentially.
And I guess my attitude is that we've been asking PG&E nicely for, as long as I can remember, to move some of the poles, and we haven't gotten very far. And if there's a way we could force Verizon and AT&amp;T to force PG&E to move the pole, I want to use the leverage, if possible.
We can certainly look into what the options are. You, you have some areas here, all of which would be federal law, so we would need to sort of marry them and then see what we could do to, whether there's an option to get that leverage.
You might also have a streetlight, which is yet another agency.
Right.
And then on page 18, 7 dash 4, design, is that installation or install-ation? What are we distilling or installing?
Yes, I think you have found a typo there, so yes. It's not, not installation, yeah, installation, install.
Good.
So is that, that was page 18, am I correct?
Actually, 18B.
Yeah.
Speaks to what Jim was raising.
Right, but we don't make it very explicit that we expect them to move, so, anyway.
Right, I mean, that, that's referring to actually the cabinets and the other equipment obviously have to be placed out of the way of any sort of pedestrians or other.
All right. Any more questions? Any more comments or questions from the public?
Come on, Deborah, you're bold. Come on.
It's just a quick question. So it's, they can go on right-of-ways, which is like hill path. Hill path. So, and then they can be within 1,500 feet of a structure or a home, or it, there is no limitation once we're on a right-of-way? I'm trying to understand that part of it.
I'm happy to answer it. So the way that the locational requirements work, there's, I think it's, it's pretty clear, there's no ability to outright prohibit a small cell facility from a residential area entirely, because that would have the effect of prohibiting it from the vast majority of Corder Madera. However, we have most preferred locations and least preferred locations, and so it's sort of, the expectation would be when an application is submitted, that every attempt would be made, and, and staff would, would sort of require this of applicants to just, to express and explain why it could not be in a most preferred location as part of the application process. And so the residential sites, which means adjacent, in the public right-of-way, adjacent to a residential zoning district, are still permitted through this process. But they would be one per the spacing requirement, one per 1,000 feet, so if one went up, then the next one could be 1,000, no closer than 1,000 feet from that, from that one that was put up in the public right-of-way adjacent to residential area.
Fair to say that recessed areas or valleys like Ten Hill Path might not be perfect installations, locations, that it's going to be higher elevations that are the more desired, since it all, all will result, I mean, it all benefits from straight view, yes?
Um...
Like all cell towers.
Yes, and it's just, it just, I hesitate, just because it's not clear to me yet the density at which they need to deploy these devices. So maybe anyone up in that elevation and down at another elevation, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
So there is protection for near a preschool or a school. So why is there that protection and not for houses? I'm just, you know, why do they have protection at all, if it's all okay?
Well, there's for houses, right? Because residential is, is listed as a least preferable.
Correct.
Yeah, so...
So it's on the least preferable, so there would be a consideration.
And, and I think one of the key differences, a school or, or a daycare center, there's limited number of those, so it still doesn't prohibit, or effectively prohibit, the deployment of these small cell facilities in Corder Madera. Whereas, if we, you know, the residential sites are, you know, there's, we just, I think, 4,500 homes and, and the vast majority of, of property in Corder Madera is residential in nature.
Okay, all right.
Rebecca's pulled up the definition of daycare center.
Right, other than a family daycare home, right?
Perhaps there's a definition of medical facilities, one.
Could be. Licensed childcare centers. Licensed childcare centers. Thank you. So anyone want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd be fine with approving this. I think we should do it and get it rolling on this. We've been through it, I think, in a lot of detail. And then I would ask staff, I would give them direction to come back on the two issues that, you know, you had more questions up. And I think we should go ahead and approve this this evening, so.
Works for me.
Are you seconding?
Once the motion is made, I will have.
I will, I will move to adopt resolution number 36 dash 2019.
Second.
If I may, with all due respect, I would suggest that we fix the couple of typos that we, in this, and it was the installation rather than installation. And your clerk has also found a typo on the first page. Yes, it's Section 1.1A, the word small at the beginning of the paragraph should be deleted. And...
We can just make a motion to approve it.
So what she said, what she said?
Yeah, with her amendment, okay?
Councilmember Kuhnhardt.
Yes.
Councilmember Ravazio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Mayor Andrews.
Yes.
Okay, what's up next? Thank you, Adam.
Okay, done with that. Next item is 6B, update on current bicycle pedestrian grant applications submitted and approval, and approval of an amendment to the capital improvement program to include three additional projects, Larkspur Class 1 path, Hart Street Connector, Pixley Redwood Intersection Improvements, and the last is the High Canal Path paving. And, and I think what I'd like to do is sort of go through each project and if we want to approve it, do a motion saying we approve or don't approve at that time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm here basically to discuss these five grant applications that we've been working on, Public Works. I want to preface with, we went to BPAC last week and had a great conversation about these as well, and we got some good constructive feedback for the designs. And also want to touch on that, what you have as attachments for these applications, the concept plans, or just that, they're concept plans. So we do foresee coming back and revamping those, this is just to get our grant applications in. And then I wanted to also highlight the, the approval, or the action item is approve the amendment to the CIP for the three additional projects, because the first two grant application projects are, are for projects that are in our capital improvement program. And the latter three are for new projects that have cropped up. Starting with the Casa Buena Complete Streets project, this is, we're applying for the Transportation Fund for Clean Air, TFC, TFCA grant application on this one. It's really a, an improvement to the PED and the biking facilities along this corridor, new sidewalks on the west side, a Class 3 bike lane in the northbound direction, a Class 2 bike lane in the southbound direction. The project's extents are pretty much from Conow intersection down to Horse Hill, so a pretty long corridor there. And we, we meet the eligible use requirements. The cost estimate was about 2.7 million for construction cost. And we don't have any current grant funding secured, so this will be nice and helpful toward our construction goal of, if we can obtain the 416, which we've, we've applied for. And this, this all came from council's direction back in January to, to pursue some grant opportunities for this project. So I'll move on to the next project. It's the Redwood Highway Path Rehab. And for, this is another transportation grant that we're seeking for this project. It's the TDA, or Transportation Development Act, grant. So this again meets the eligibility requirements for that grant. The construction estimate's about 1.1 million. We currently have about 97,000 secured grant funding. It is a TDA as well. So this is a new cycle, new call for projects with TDA, so we're applying for another TDA grant. And this one in the, in the amount of 571,000. And construction, we're hoping to get to next year as a relative kind of priority there. So those are the two updates for grant applications that we have with the current projects within our capital improvement program. So, yep.
And so we aren't making any sort of decision, we're just being informed, correct?
Correct, yeah. And if you have any feedback or comments, happy to take them on those, and we can address all those at the end if that's easier.
Happy hunting.
Thank you, thank you. So yeah, now, now this is the, the three new projects that we're looking into. These are not in our capital improvement program, and they're safe pathways, which is a funding mechanism for the Safe Routes to School program, which David Kuhnhardt is a member in. So the first one is the Class 1 Larkspur-Corder Madera path, Hart Street Connector. That's a large grant, it's up to 400,000 funding. There's two grant pools, if you will, of funding allocations for this Safe Pathways program. There's large projects, 400K, and small projects for 50,000. So we have two large projects and one small project. So the, the one small project is the Pixley-Redwood Intersection Improvements. And then the third large proj, the third project we're looking into is the High Canal Path paving. So I'll go quickly and, and touch on each one of those. So the Hart Street Connector connects the Class 1 Corder Madera path with Hart Street. So here you can see it in, in orange. That's the existing dirt, narrow, steep path that connects the, the Class 1 path down to Hart Street. So we're looking into the opportunity to, to make that a safer connector, put an ADA ramp, meaning 5% max slope, and, you know, a staircase for PEDs that, that want to take the shortest route. But this is, yeah, like I said, this is a concept. We, we got a, a lot of good constructive feedback from our BPAC committee, and we just wanted to get our foot in the door with a grant application. So this is about a $500,000 rough estimate, and we've requested 400 for grant funding. So the next...
And just a question on that to clarify, that orange path currently, that's on private property, right?
Correct, yes, you hit that.
It's private residential property.
And it's built by little boys.
Quite possibly, yeah. So it does dog ear that property corner there. So that's, that's going to be something that we're going to look into.
It just takes it off the private property.
So we, we've, we've, you know, currently, that's, that's the plan in this concept. We were looking at opportunities, maybe keeping, maybe working with that, that property owner to potentially keep it there and pave it there, but that's down the road. If, if we secure grant funding, then we can start that conversation. This current concept right now is not doing any improvements to the private property parcel.
And you have submitted an application already?
Yes, these went in last week, yeah, yeah. But that was just to apply for the application, if we haven't accepted any funding yet. So the second is an intersection improvement for Pixley-Redwood. So this is improvement to signing and striping in that intersection and adding curb bulb outs to reduce the pedestrian crossing distance. And also some vegetation management, some trimming of trees in that area, really to try to add some cost-effective safety improvements to the, the PED crossing along that intersection there. The rough estimate of cost on this is about 120,000, and we've put in for nearly the maximum allowance for the small project categories, which we're, we've recast 48,000. And the third that I wanted to touch on, the third project that we're looking into is the, the High Canal Path paving. This is basically from Lakeside, which is the upper image, it's the south, southernmost extent of this potential project, to the Sandra Market Trail, which is the bottom image. And it's an existing dirt path, and this project would include looking at putting, paving down for that pathway. A few things I want to touch on in this project in particular, it's about a $500,000 construction estimate, and we're requesting about 50% of, of the grant funding for that. An added benefit to this would be improved maintenance access for our Public Works team that, that regularly uses this path for maintenance of the High Canal. And then if grant funds are secured, then we would then go the next steps of coordination with the property owners. There's, there's a little bit of, of an overlap with the, with the property parcels and easements in that area. So there's going to be discussions, should grant funds be awarded for this project, that Public Works and town staff will need to prepare and, and go down that route if, if we're going to be accepting any funds.
Are you looking at a permeable paving material, or paving material that won't be so bad if it falls into the High Canal for the...
So that's a great question. The, the, the plan, you can see on the bottom image, it does show it gets near the top of bank. The plan actually includes some, some retaining structures that, it's included in the concept cost to keep that stabilized and hopefully not falling and spalling down into the, the High Canal. We didn't investigate any permeable pavement. We are just looking at a real rough order of magnitude, just asphalt at this time.
The, the, just make one comment, which is that all of these have been looked at closely by the Safe Routes to School folks, and they're all considered priority as, from, from their perspective. I should say from our perspective.
Yeah, I agree.
Any questions?
Yeah, so I was just going to ask about permeable paving on this project too, but I'm also just curious on a more kind of policy level, do we generally, when we do these little paving odds and ends, or, or even, you know, street work, major street work, do we generally stipulate that it be permeable paving that we're using, which is kind of a, like, an entry-level sustainable design feature that, like, coming from an architecture background, that's just one of the things that you do? So I'm just wondering if, is, is that aligned with town policy right now?
It's, it's definitely a consideration. I would have to deflect that to RJ, our pavement expert. He's, he's actually brought it to my attention that, that the permeable paving, albeit it's, it's great and it, you know, transpires water down through, it, it just, it's, it's an expensive product. So a lot of times it costs itself out. And also the wearability of it isn't quite as good as, as traditional hot mix asphalt. So yeah, it does have some, you know, attributes that, that sell it, but it also is premiums.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Let me see, I vaguely recall from when I first got on council about four years ago, we had something like $220,000 earmarked for us, that we had to return for this project. And what is the exact nature of the town's legal authority to build a paved path along this property?
It's a great question. So we don't actually, we haven't looked into the, the legal authority, really dug into it at this point. This is just to apply for the grant, should the grant even be, it's a priority two project between the two that we have, the large projects, the Hart Street Connector is actually our first priority. So should we get the, the funding at least offered, then we're going to definitely look into the, the buildability of it, the feasibility, and, and that's going to be a, a big undertaking with...
Let's see, you know, I'm, I'm afraid that we're going to get embarrassed with the funding agency by asking for money five or six years ago, turning it back, and then coming in with the same uncertainty, you know, once was a mistake, doing it again is...
I think it's lessons learned, but I'll tell you the, you know, our reputation and our relationship with their staff, we're on the same page, and so there's no embarrassment there, there's no payback. We think we have a path, we think we have some strong arguments, and so we thought it was important to submit the grant. We, Councilmember Ravazio was able to give us a history lesson, and so we're going through the records now to engage those two or three residents that had concerns, we're going to do it in advance, and we think we have a path, a strong path forward, so.
And what sort of outreach was done to the neighborhood prior to this?
No outreach, no outreach. Again, you're talking about, if you go back to the history, you're talking two or three neighbors. This isn't, and so when we looked at the history, it came down to two or three neighbors out of multiple. And so we, again, this is a, this is an important project, and we were under the time constraint of 10 days. And what do we do? Do we make a decision? How do we move forward? And so we feel comfortable submitting it, but we have work to do. And so we're, we're comfortable in, in where we stand, and we're confident that we'll be able to engage the, the right neighbors and, and get answers without upsetting anybody. So, again, this is an important one, and when you're on a time crunch, Mr. Mayor, I mean, you got to make a call, and I think these are public funds, it's an important project. We're submitting the grant, we're going for it, and I think it was the right decision.
Is it appropriate for me to talk about an, an opinion, or do you want to take further questions from the public or anything first?
Probably take public comment or questions. Sir Robin?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm Jim Robinson, Ash Havin, Corder Madera, and I attend the BPAC meeting and had opportunity to participate in the discussion. This project actually goes back a long way, almost a 20-year history. And each time it was sort of met with opposition from what I'll call the west side of the project, the properties that have fences that back up to the, to the High Canal path. And I don't know how many there are, but I know that there was a large crowd of people that came to a BPAC meeting at one time, and they had expressed concerns about it. This also was part of our Corder Madera bicycle and pedestrian plan in 2016, so it's not a surprise, been around for a long time. I support applying for an application. I concur with Councilmember Kuhnhardt and Vice Mayor Beckman's comments about decomposed granite. When this was an issue before the town years ago, that was sort of the preferred plan for, for this pathway. One thing I would add, though, is that each and every time this has come before the council, we've heard from whoever happens to be in the Public Works Department, there's a legal question whether or not we can actually improve this property, improve this site, I think as the mayor has already eloquently already described. So I would hope that we would find out what, and I don't even know what the questions are to ask, but I think that we should, since it's been deferred so many, many times, there must be some good reason why that's been done. The other concern I have is that even with decomposed granite on that property, I mentioned this last week, the BPAC meeting, that when we built the High Canal Pump Station, there are certain environmental issues prohibiting us doing work at certain times. And that area on the hillside, I'll call it the east side of that path, has a lot of foliage and vegetation there. And during the year, particularly in the winter months and into the spring, when the birds are nesting, we were prohibited from clearing out that pathway. So even if it was improved, you get it narrowed down to a single lane, and that's what concerns me about Safe Routes to School looking at this and others looking at it, because there are a lot of issues related to this that make it rather peculiar to some of the other paths we have, like the path that runs between Lakeside and Hickory, where you don't have those inhibitions from brush on either side of the pathway. So in any event, I support an application. I think that it's possible, it could be rejected. I guess I am concerned a little bit about getting the expectations up of the Safe Routes to School and also getting the angst and the ire up of those who happen to be behind the fence line. So I think it'd be good for us to do our homework and find out what we can do, and hopefully that won't preclude us, at least from the option of looking at an application for a grant to see if there are funds available, so that if we could proceed, we could do that. But I do think that the residents on the fence side should be engaged in some discussion so it doesn't come as, as a surprise. I know that most people don't like to have surprises, so those are my comments. Appreciate all you do, and I hear someone's phone ringing.
And your time is up.
Yeah. See, the last speaker didn't have a timer on there.
If it's possible, could we pull up a Google map that goes, shows Birch from Lakeside? Just an overview of?
If you say please, David.
Please. And thank you.
There's approximately a dozen houses.
Well, yeah, I've counted them, but I was, I wondered the perspective of the path from Pixley going to Lakeside and the homes on Birch. And then of course, the homes on South Birch.
You want map view or?
I think we want satellite view, don't we?
This is good.
This says, there's Birch.
Let's go ahead and, and what I want to do is, is go from Pixley all the way to the Sandra Market Trail, following the both paved and unpaved sections. David McPherson, my comments don't really address the legal issues because I also don't know what legal grounds some of the homeowners think they have to block paving there or improvements. But what I wanted to point out is that the path, existing path, comes here. So all of these neighbors on Birch, at one time I assumed that this was not paved and the town was able to pave that without any opposition.
But it's between two canals.
I don't know. Well, my, my point is not a legal issue so much as these homeowners now enjoy the benefits of having a paved accessible path from small children to people in wheelchairs to seniors and everybody in between. Then we cut over here and this section, of course, is rutted and is not accessible for a lot of people that are younger or older and certainly not people that are, have disabilities. So some of the people here feel, I suppose, and they can articulate it better, that any improvements in their perceived backyard is going to interfere with their enjoyment of their homes, perhaps make more noise, perhaps bring more of the public. But none of the people here on Birch are dealing with that issue. And of course, when the Sandra Market Trail was not paved, a lot of people along Birch here were concerned about the paving of Sandra Market Trail. Well, since that's been done, those homeowners now have all seen the light and think, this is wonderful, it's great for the community, it improves our home values because of course walkability and bikeability, access to that trail is important. So whatever public outreach we can do to helpfully convert some of these homeowners to see that any improvements of this path are both good for the community as well as them as homeowners. And I think that that resistance probably can be overcome with the history of other neighbors in the area. Thank you.
I'll bring it back for comments.
If I may, please. One of the reasons that Hart and Pixley are connected is that the improvement of the little Hart connection between the major north-south bike trail and pedestrian trail actually is a route for most of the Larkspur students who go to Neal Cummins, right? And it's a way to focus those students actually on smaller streets than they would otherwise be on if they come all the way down to the center of town. And then they feed right down to the Pixley-Redwood connection to the back of Neal Cummins School. The, as you may remember, we have a question about crossing guards and the crossing guard from Pixley-Redwood has been pulled and switched for the much busier road. And these physical improvements go a long way in my mind to physically making safer that Pixley-Redwood intersection, which has high pedestrian and bicycle flow and low car flow, and it's a dead-end street, Pixley is a dead-end street by that point, but it's hard to see, and if there are cars parked around the corner, which they often are, it's really hard to see kids coming across the street there. So these improvements go a long way physically to open it up, improve visibility, and make that point of crossing a lot safer and may allow us to live without that $18,000 a year crossing guard expense.
We went through this at BPAC last week and we endorsed all of these projects and I would recommend that we do the same thing tonight. I think they're all terrific improvements. The Hart Street thing may need more work, but we just need to get in line for the grant. And on the High Canal issue, I know we have some history on that, but I think we also have some new learning and some new experience and we have some new staff members. And I would highly encourage us to pursue that and work with them and see if there's a way to figure that out, because I, you know, to your point, David, I think it would just be a huge safety improvement for kids getting back and forth to school. So I'm, you know, let's say go ahead and, you know, do it, and I would also say we should approve the amendment to the capital improvement program.
I support all these projects.
I support all the ones but the High Canal, and I just think we need to do more research before we formally add it to our capital budget.
And could, could I, could I ask, is that, is that a matter of conversations with those who might have claims on their back fence line of, of some kind?
No, it's based on comments I've heard over the years that they don't want it paved like between the two canals, you know, Lakeside to Hickory, because it's used currently primarily as a pedestrian path. And if you pave it, then you will encourage bicyclists who tend to travel at a relatively high speed to go along there. So that's some of the comments. I guess really what I'm saying is, my concern with putting it in the capital budget is that the next time we hear it, it will be, let's start construction, we've got it in the capital budget, the council has already approved it, and I'm not in the position right now to approve paving that. I want better outreach to the neighborhood along there. And it's very possible that they'll support it, you know? They might support it if instead of being eight feet wide, it's six feet wide, you know? I'm not certain. It just, the groundwork has not been laid with the neighborhood to go ahead with, with this project. And given the opposition we've experienced over the years, I think we should at least try and make the outreach to the neighborhood, particularly, you know, I don't believe anyone in the neighborhood was notified that the bicycle, pedestrian committee was looking at it on the 15th. If they didn't carefully read the minutes tonight, they will be surprised that it has been quote "approved." You know, so I, I'm, I think we'd better go slower on this particular project. It's a, it's a very sensitive one over in that part of town. So, anyway. But if you guys want to make a motion, go ahead.
I think this is just direction.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I just as a matter of procedure, I, this project doesn't go forward unless we get a grant. This project doesn't go forward if we don't come back to council with what the project is even going to look at. This is securing grant funds. There's a possible path and it's all in the negotiation of those that have had issues and I have, we wouldn't even have submitted this if we didn't think we, we could see a path. You know, this is a procedural thing where you're, you're just setting a, a place mark, mark on this project and staff has their list of projects to work on for the next year. I mean, that's what we're doing. You know, of course, the community, those neighbors are going to be involved in this closely, some more than others, the ones that have more concerns. I mean, that's part of the process. This project can't go forward without it. I mean, is your concern, Mr. Mayor, that you're, that by listing this as a project that it's going to infuriate people in that neighborhood?
It's more that, once it's put on this list, somebody's going to turn around to me in two years and say, well, the council approved it back in 2019 by putting it on the list.
Do you worry about kind of a runaway train type?
Yes.
Let's see, we're going to know in, in what, six to eight months if we got this grant? That's our, that's our timeline we're talking about, right? If we don't get the grant, we're not talking about this project. As we, over the next six to eight months, as we engage the community and move forward, because the council is putting it in the CIP and we start to engage the neighbors and we see the path and we get the grant, then we'll move forward with the project. If we engage the, the neighbors, I mean, there's, there's a few other strategic, there's a few other issues within here that, this is a different day than it was last time this came before the council, so.
And, and we got the grant once before and we're set to go and had all the approvals and we didn't do it because of neighborhood. So I don't think we're setting in stone that we're doing anything here. I mean, I think we always have the, I mean, but what this does is it gets the wheels in motion, it gets the grant going, and I think it gets staff starting to think about this and work on it. And I think I mentioned this earlier, I mean, we have, I, I had a long meeting with staff yesterday about this and I gave them all the history and talked through all the detail on this and went through the whole thing. We've got a really different staff than we had a couple of years ago.
Okay.
That I think is infinitely more capable of working with the public and listening and taking into account what we need to do and coming up with creative solutions. And I have total confidence that these guys can figure something out and, and at a minimum, not going to do anything that's going to infuriate any neighbors. They're, they're super sensitive and I think you've seen that as well. So I'd be fine, because this gives them some direction and gives them some momentum to move forward with it. So I'd be fine going ahead with it. I understand, I totally understand your reservations, because believe me, I was, I was in the BPAC meetings where we got blasted, so.
I know, and it's...
But I, I think, I think it's a different day, it's a different time, and, and I do think the benefit of this project would be enormous for school kids.
For several schools, too.
From a safety standpoint, it's like, huge. So I understand your reservations totally, but I would say let's go ahead and do it.
It's another selfish thing from my personal point of view, and maybe I should recuse myself on this issue, but today is a day when my spouse walked on that High Canal pathway to go to book passage to work and home on that passageway and feels, would feel more safe when passed by pedestrians with, with perambulators and with bicycles if it's a more level pathway and a more completed pathway. So those who know most about bicycles and that population has increased greatly, believe this is an important project. That's why I like it.
And Mr. Mayor, I mean, just to the, I know they're all well-stated, our retired town manager as well, that this has been a long going on, you know, this discussion has been going on for years, that staff will, we hear you loud and clear, I mean, we'll engage those neighbors immediately following this meeting and, and start that conversation just to let them know, look, this isn't approved, we, we think it's important, we're submitting a grant, we'll tell them the backstory and we want to work with you, let's engage and find out who we need to engage and work forward, so.
If I may, through the mayor, I just wanted to respond to council member Kuhnhart that your wife's use of the path does not create a legal conflict given its location.
Thank you so much.
We are charging a toll.
You are.
I guess, do you need a motion?
I would move that we adopt the amendment to the CIP to include three new projects.
And I'd like to second that, please.
Council member, council member Bailey, council member Kuhnhart.
Yes.
Council member Ravazio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Mayor Andrews.
Oh. Next item up is discussion and possible direction to staff regarding policy framework, draft zoning ordinance, and environmental analysis for creation of a floor area bonus for hotels in certain zoning districts.
Hello again, council members. I'll try to move this along relatively quickly, but I do think it's important that we go through a couple of items here tonight on this issue, which it's been a while, actually I'll start with that, that just, you know, it's, it's been, this is an item that really started back in February of, February of 2018 with a discussion on whether or not to permit additional floor area for hotels in town. There, we also have a couple of new and excellent council members on the dais, so.
At least one.
Since that conversation, and it's also as, you know, as I'm sure you've looked at, it's a relatively complex ordinance that has been developed between staff and, and really the planning commission over the last year. So wanted to give the council an opportunity to sort of have a discussion regarding this item. We're not asking for action, any action this evening, other than some direction about whether or not this draft ordinance and the policy that is within this draft ordinance still is, well, is if the town council wants to affirm its support for that direction. And also it's a good opportunity to raise any questions, concerns, any comments you have on this draft ordinance and the policy this evening. And then lastly, we are looking for some direction regarding implementation of this and the environmental review process that we are recommending we go forward with. And just to start, oh, I have a, here we go. So just where we are today, I already talked about February 20th, 2018, the town council You know, we based this draft ordinance really from the policy direction that we got at that meeting from the town council members at that time. We talked at that meeting, staff presented information regarding the town's current policies related to hotels, including the permitted size of hotels in town. We relayed some information regarding the size of, permitted size of hotels in other jurisdictions, the size of hotels that have recently been developed in other jurisdictions in Marin, and direction was really given to explore ways to allow additional floor area for hotels in Cora Madera that provided under certain conditions and that required hotels to meet certain higher standards at the time. And there was a number of suggestions at that meeting given for what really were the goals and objectives for these hotels if they were to achieve additional or higher FAR floor area, bigger size. So that staff report for the February 20th meeting is in attachment three, along with the staff reports for all of these other meetings that are shown on the slide. So we subsequently went and worked with the planning commission and presented the planning commission in July of last year, a conceptual framework for a new ordinance that sort of conceived this idea of a floor area bonus for hotels. At that meeting, and I think this was a really good suggestion by the planning commission, they recommended that we try to incorporate some more significant guidance and as much as possible get some objectivity into how you achieve this bonus. And so staff went back to work and really developed this floor area schedule or systematic schedule, a point system for assigning floor area based on certain amenities or attributes of a potential hotel project. And so that's where you get in this chart and I'll go into this in, in a little bit of detail after this slide and as we get into this. So that, we came back to the planning commission on November 13th and the planning commission with some other additional tweaks returned. And on April 9th of 2019 of this year, we drafted a zoning ordinance amendment that the planning commission recommended for approval. And since that time, there's been a number, we've continued to look at the ways to better clarify the ordinance and just in structure and make sure its, its readability is, is good and have revised... and have revised that, not substantively, but just for, with some additional sort of clarifying items, and that is what you see in attachment one to your staff report. The planning commission resolution and the findings that they made is in attachment two of your staff report. So, just real quickly, I'm gonna give an overview of what this ordinance entails, and what's included within that ordinance. First and foremost, we're talking about basically a bonus floor area. A hotel could receive a floor area bonus up to point seven FAR. Currently, that's, that's about double what the current ordinance allows for hotels in town, which is point three four FAR. Those would only be, the, the ability to apply for that bonus would be limited to the C three, C four, and MX zoning districts, and would be limited to sites greater than one acre in size. Applicants would be required to hold a community meeting early in the process, that would be sponsored by the applicant, and then hold a preliminary hearing at the planning commission prior to even submitting an application, so there'd be already a discussion out there in, in the community regarding such a hotel. There would be then these enhanced findings required to be made by the planning commission related to design and aesthetics, environmental sustainability, community integration, and enhancements to the public realm, and these are sort of broad categories, but there's some more meat to that later on, and specified in the, in the planning, I'm sorry, in the, in the draft ordinance. That's actually spelled out in this scoring system, which was developed to aid both the applicant, an applicant coming in to gain some more certainty in their planning, and how much floor area they might be expected to be able to get under this ordinance, but also for the planning commission and decision-makers, and evaluating the extent to, of the bonus that, to be granted. This is just a map showing those zoning districts, the C three, C four, and C five, sorry, and MX districts. They're outlined in red, so you can see the very northern commercial areas of town along Pfeiffer Avenue. There's the MX one zoning district, which is the turquoise color right in the middle of town on the highway, where two existing hotels are located. And then, there is this other broader area, sort of right at the Tamalpais, an intersection with one oh one, including the commercial areas on Casa Buena, and then the pink area, which is actually the C four district, which currently does not allow for hotels in town, and so that would also be another amendment that would need to be made, which would be to allow hotels still as a conditional use, but allow hotels in the C four district. This is just a close-up of that area, which I think you're all familiar with, but is, there's a variety of different types of uses, and, and really, a hotel is compatible, one of the things about hotels, they, they sort of can be compatible with a variety of types of, of commercial service uses, residential uses, and other even light industrial uses to a certain extent, because of the transient nature.
The C four is the malls.
No, sorry, the C four is this area that's seen on the screen, it's sort of the San Clemente, between Paradise Drive and San Clemente Drive. There were specific conditions that were included in the draft ordinance, including the minimum one acre size site. That was in place because of essentially all of the requirements placed on the findings that would require sort of a site of substantial size, in order to actually implement a lot of these things, including the community integration, public realm improvements, and so on. And it also responds to, I think, a comment that the council had at the time in February, that there was a sort of a concern about clustering, and having sort of too many hotels take advantage of this in any one location, and so this.
A monopoly board with all bright red hotels.
Nonetheless, yes.
We aspire to being Millbrae.
The flood zone standards came from really planning commission concerns that, and some ambiguity during a review of another hotel application, that we wanted to spell it and be very clear, that the finished floor of hotels should be above, sort of act in the same way that finished floors for residential projects should be at the, currently, it's eleven-foot elevation. And there's the other conditions that we talked about, in terms of the community meeting and the preliminary review. This is a map that just shows, under the current parcels, parcel sizes, all those parcels in those zones that I had talked about before, of one acre or greater. Just to note that there could be, in the future, additional sites opened up through the, through basically a lot merger, or something like that, or sites taken out if there are a lot splits, but, you know, this is just a moment in time. And I do note that there are some properties with, not shown in yellow on this map, but are owned by the same owner, but are in adjacent parcels, that could be combined theoretically to qual, have a qualifying site, including the, sort of the big four, Herc Rentals, and then one of the auto dealerships on Casa Buena. And then, there's the findings, these three, four broad categories that I mentioned, so a couple of notes about them. One is the planning commission felt pretty strongly that the two, the top two bullets should be weighted, so they're sort of weighted findings, and that the way this point system works is that all of the findings have to be made in, in order to actually approve a bonus for floor area for a hotel. So, you gotta make all the findings, first off, so each finding has to be made, but if the findings are made, the top two bullets would be up to a maximum of point one two FAR for architecture and design, environmental sustainability, again, were weighted almost twice as much as the other two findings, but community integration and public realm. And so, this is where we started, and then the, what the planning commission in July of last year, what we discussed was, well, let's go to the next level, and really define how to get to those maximum FAR bonuses for each of these findings. And this is really for architecture and design, I'm sorry, the, this is a little bit out of order, I'm just listing those findings here, but really, this is sort of the FAR, then, assignment schedule. And again, the goal here was to really put some definition on how to achieve the, up to that, those maximum points, or the maximum bonus under each of the findings, with some objective or more objective criteria. Design and aesthetics is one of those where you really aren't able to get to. The objectivity that sort of, I think we all agreed, that you're still left in the subjective criteria realm, but with the four, some more elaborate language about what good design means, and what good aesthetics, what we're trying to achieve, and so the goals are stated here, and that will still come in under sort of a preliminary hearing, an applicant would come in, in preliminary hearing, say, hey, you know, look, I, we think we're really got a greatly, great design project, and can you tell us how we meet up with these, the criteria under this finding, and, and hopefully, there's a discussion to be had about what someone might be able to expect under, how much FAR could be granted under that finding. Environmental sustainability was more, on the other hand, more objectively defined, and so, really, you meet this finding if you're doing Cal Green plus three electives. Now, you don't get, that would, that would get you point zero two FAR, two points under the system, but it would meet the finding. You could get up to twelve points, or point one two FAR, by essentially doing Cal Green tier two. And then, there are these other categories for community integration, these are maximum amounts for each of these categories, but at least explain, under that community integration, what was expected, or some examples of things that could achieve floor area bonus under this construct. And so, you can see the variety of different things that were discussed, there's also sort of, you know, if you're not doing one of the innovation categories, something not on this list, up to two, you know, two point oh two FAR, or two max. But these were things that would be, have to be proposed as part of an application for a hotel under this bonus ordinance. Public realm, again, there's some other examples here that were given. And in these cases, public realm and both community integration, other ideas could be floated that potentially weren't thought of under these, these are examples, but that would be the expectation, you'd come in under one of these, but it won't preclude somebody has technology improved, or whatever it is, as some other new idea comes out, of preclude some, someone from applying without, you know, that wasn't included in this list currently. We also compared this ord-
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
Did you say you have to get all four categories to get an FAR bonus?
Correct.
Okay.
You have to meet all four of these, of the findings.
So, you have to have some kind of positive in all four categories?
At least the minimum, yep. And so, you may not get the, up to the max in each category, but you at least have to show that you, you have to do something in each piece of this.
I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
That's correct. No, I think that's a key component, actually, of this.
It's important, thanks.
Yep. We looked at the general plan for consistency purposes, obviously, and really, there's a full elaboration on, on how this draft ordinance is consistent with the general plan and the planning commission resolution, and those findings were made in their resolution, so you can look through that. But clearly, throughout the general plan, there's this concept of, of, not only, this is more up here, this slide is more up here, that all of these areas that we described are in the mixed-use commercial land use designation, which, here's the definition, or what's described as sort of the objective for that area, which is a mix of uses, clearly hotels are one of those uses that belong in this mixed-use commercial area, obviously, all four of our existing hotels are in this mixed-use commercial area. But in addition, there's some specific policies that we looked at, that talk about infill floor area and allowing bonuses to maximum floor ratios if infill development, for infill development that demonstrates substantial compliance with infill policies. There's also flexible development standards to, you know, achieve economic development goals, things like that, so those are included, and again, the, the planning commission resolution has a full, more robust discussion and conversation about that. And then, so, now we're into really the next steps in this process. Obviously, I wanna hear from the, the council, any comments or questions on the policy itself, and the draft zoning ordinance that we just reviewed. But if the town council provides direction to proceed with implementation of this policy, staff is recommending that the town undertake additional environmental analysis prior to returning to then, the planning commission would be the next step, and then the town council with the proposed ordinance. And as you can see in the options, actually, what we would do, if we wanted to proceed, we would actually come back to the town council with a contract with an environmental consultant for approval by the town council, that would be the next step. So, as discussed in the staff report, and it's all laid out, I think, pretty clearly, we did receive public comment from Bob Silvestri of Community Venture Partners, and regarding really what was discussed, is really the inadequacy of utilizing the secret exemption for the ordinance, and based on follow-up discussions with him, that staff had had with him, we believe the potential environmental impact of the ordinance could likely be adequately addressed, and, and sort of the potential environmental impacts disclosed adequately through the preparation of an initial study, and a negative declaration, or a mitigated negative declaration, but obviously, we'd wanna confirm that through consultation with the environmental consultant that we would select. So, that's where we are, happy to answer, you know, I put up some of the options, or the, you know, some of the considerations in terms of, this is obviously, will take some time to do, and some cost, and so, we're looking for guidance on how to proceed, or with the initial study or MND, which is what staff feels we should, can adequately do this with an MND at this part, at this point. But there are some options here, obviously, there's the first two options, which are really, let us know if you, we wanna proceed with the ordinance that we've drafted as proposed, if there are any, option two is really about, you know, are there things that you'd like to change, or see modified in the draft ordinance and policy? And then, three is, is, you know, not to proceed with this proposed hotel FAR bonus ordinance at this time, that is an option as well. And that would be mostly based on the.
Let's sort of break it up into discussing the ordinance.
Sure.
And then, the next thing will be giving you guidance.
That's perfect, yeah.
If we wanna go forward with the ordinance about the environmental, David, you had questions?
Well, I have a question on the environmental process. If we did not do a high-level environmental analysis for the zoning change, but required it of any individual project that comes forward, when it does, would the developer be paying for that environmental work when an individual project comes forward?
Yes, and in fact, they still will, I mean, it's not one or the other, in fact, it's sort of both.
But at this point, we don't have any specific-
Correct.
-site proposals, so you're saying we do a mitigated negative declaration analysis at our expense entirely, which may or may not be applicable to any one site.
Correct.
And they're gonna have to redo and, and come up with a probably much more expensive EIR for their own project.
Right, so, exactly. And I think there's, there's, there's project-specific analyses that are always required of, depending on the specific environmental constraints of any one site, or the specific environment and site, that may be, sorry, the, the, the conditions of any particular site, so that's always required. This is required more to assess the, on the theoretical level of potential sites that may be developed under this ordinance, and how it might affect density, in this case, we're talking really about density-related impacts, because of the additional FAR that could be developed under this ordinance. So, it's density-related impacts on a cumulative level as well.
Sort of, the worst case would be if all the yellow squares were maxed out.
Yeah.
Is hotels, would traffic grind to a stop?
And it's, it's interesting, I think.
You know, that's sort of, that's sort of the most extreme.
Yeah.
It is, and it-
It's such a theoretical.
It is, and it's different, and I will say, my, my previous experience in, in New York, actually, you, you would never analyze all the potential sites of, of an ordinance like this, being developed as a hotel, and I think it's, 'cause it's just unreasonable to assume that over any period of time. But California is, is a little bit more strict in that regard. With, there are some ways, and I think, actually, Mr. Silvestri, and his, he has some correspondence, actually, that was, just came in today, I've, there are some ways that I think we can still, you know, and this is part of the reason why you do the environmental analysis, I guess, at the, at the ordinance level, is it may reflect back and, and, and sort of provide some sort of potential alternatives or modifications to the ordinance you may wanna consider at the ordinance stage. So, there are ways, I think, that we may think about the ordinance, and how to limit the number of potential applications under this ordinance, to make it more easier to analyze, put it that way, for, for things like traffic and whatnot.
I'm, I'm not sure we should be taking our direction from a person from another town who has a conflict in yet a third town, but the, most of the other jurisdictions around us allow higher FAR, right?
Yes.
For hotels.
Yeah, actually, I have that.
And in fact, have them implemented at a higher FAR. Do any of those have this very, I think, creative and, and careful segmented incentive program that you've designed here for all the different ways of getting to a point seven? Or are they all just, that's their?
Right, so, most of them are just, here's their actual floor area, although I will say, you know, for example, like Larkspur, that one point oh FAR is through a specific plan, so there was, excuse me, there were specific policies that- was, excuse me, there were specific policies that presumably development in that specific area would have to comply with. But, but no, the other, in general, I think, the other set sort of FARs for, I think, as we talked about before, they either lump hotels in with their other commercial uses and just say that, like we currently do, and say, you have up to X FAR for hotels as, or an office, if that were, were the case, and what was going to be developed. And so this is, I would say, unusual in that respect, or different in that respect.
Any other questions, comments? So, is there language in here to your point about that, about precluding clustering of too many hotels, or is that something that you would need direction to add? Because I do think-
Well, there is-
I do think that's a good idea, because the whole idea of this is to incentivize hotels, so the potential is that suddenly we have a lot more hotels, and that might not be something we want. So, all, all next to each other and, you know, taking up everything.
No, that, right, and so I think, you know, I think there are ways to do that, and yes, if there's something that, you know, it's something that I'm going to be looking at anyways in more conjunction with the environmental analysis, I think there may be, again, like I was saying, it might be a, a easier way to do the analysis for something like traffic if we do it that way. But yes, I think the second, we did discuss, and I discussed this with Mr. Silvestri in one of our, I think, the May meeting that we had with staff, and just, we're sort of, you know, I think it's worth collaborating and, and having those discussions with, with individuals at that time about environmental impacts and how to address them, and how you might also implement some thing, something like a de-clustering provision, and I've, I've thought about ways to do that, that could still, I think, be perfectly, implement what the goal of the actual ordinance is, which is to incentivize and get a, a hotel to come either redevelop or, or locate, for example, in our C4 district. And, you know, the reality is, we're, I think it's, I think the reality is, you know, and I think Mr. Silvestri would agree, really, but, and, we'd be lucky if we got one or two over the next 20, 30 years, or, you know, so, we're not, the idea that you're going to take this whole MX district and-
Yeah.
And really develop hotel after hotel on that corridor, I don't think that's really the case. I think it's more for practical purpose, how do you deal with the environmental analysis may result in, in needing to do that, and I, I don't think that harms the ordinance, because again, we're really talking about one or two in, in, in specific locations. The preliminary, I'll just say preliminarily, I think the thought would be to sort of have, you know, make zones in different portions of, of this applicable area. You can see the circle at the very top and say, that's one zone, and only, you can only, one application can take advantage, or one project can be developed under the bonus ordinance in that area.
Right.
Same thing with, as you go down, for example, through these other areas. And those would tie nicely with sort of the, the intersections and the highway on and off ramps at those locations. So, I mean, that's just preliminarily the thoughts I have on that.
Thank you.
The one comment I have is, in terms of your categorization-
Mm-hmm.
Well, first, let me back up. Thank you, this is basically what the council asked you to work on over the last couple of years, and it shows a great deal of creativity, so, you know, my only comment now is sort of tweaks.
And I just would say also, I think, you know, the commission really dug into this and dove into this, put a lot of thought, and I think a lot of that creativity goes to them as well, so.
So, I guess, the category, community integration-
Mm-hmm.
To me, I think that should sort of be tangible, noticeable benefits to town residents that they can see easily, okay? And the public realm is more generally, you know, helps the town out, but the residents might not directly see the benefits, even though the town does benefit. And that's why I'm thinking moving the workforce housing category from the community integration to the public realm.
Mm-hmm.
Because that is basically, if, if done well, it would help us out with RENA, but, you know, the, the residents in town wouldn't necessarily notice that it's there or anything, it'd just be, we'd have some new neighbors in town, and, but, you know, if it's-
Yeah.
Done, done well, so that, that's my only comment about this categorization.
Yeah, I think from an actual, from a technical perspective, it wouldn't really matter where you put that, because both community integration and public realm have a six-point maximum.
Yeah.
I think, the reason why it was, one of the reasons why it was in community integration, because all of these are actually, community integration was the project and the private property, there were some, it was going to be on private property, and so some part of the project itself that was going to be opened up or somehow integrate with the community in some ways, whereas the public realm was dealing more specifically with something out in our capital, you know, you know, our CIP or something like that, that they were doing a direct contribution to those bike and ped facilities, so, but, but I understand, I mean, I, I think, like I said, technically, it could work either way.
Are you defining this workforce housing as, as employees of that hotel?
Well-
Which, in which case, it really is a private interior kind of thing, and, or are you defining it as any workforce housing?
Well, it's, that same, we had that conversation with the planning commission also, and it was, I think, a really good question, but I think at the end of the day, we said it might be better left undefined and let the proposal come in, and actually, maybe it, you know, why, why preclude somebody from doing it one or both ways? I mean, maybe it works either way. So, but I think there is a distinction there that's worth, worth pointing out and noting. The only, the only thing to consider that workforce housing would, it's just, if you put it in the public realm, it start, you know, there is competition amongst the total points you can get, so that's just something to consider.
Yeah, I guess, one other reason, you look at community integration, since I've been in Corder Madera, we've lost a couple of amenities available from hotels, one was swim club, the other was the restaurant-
Yep.
You know, and it'd be really nice if we could encourage them to think about adding one of those two back. We can't force them, but I wouldn't want to give away all the community integration points.
Right, with, with housing, okay, so in that way.
And moving the workforce housing out makes those other categories more important to win.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I think Jim has a point.
Okay, yeah. Did you?
I asked my question, that's it.
So do we want to-
George, you have anything?
Okay. So are there any more comments about the-
I'll just say, I think this is, this is great policy, and I want to applaud the planning department and the planning commission for pulling this together, this is awesome. Thank you.
I, I agree with that, yes. And I, I like the way that there's sort of a fine-grained roots to success, and, and showing people how, what we mean by success in these categories, I thought, I think it's very creative and entirely beneficial.
I think it's great, let's roll.
Can I ask you about a word on page two of attachment one? It says findings, fenestration, that means openings, correct, not fences?
Sorry, I'm, where were we?
Findings one A, second to last line, fenestration, I'm not familiar with that term.
Oh, fenestration, yes, yes.
Windows, portals, okay.
Absolutely.
Are we, are we back to the environmental portion of this?
Yeah, well, I assume we want a direct staff to go forward with it, with, with or without amendment, or?
Yes, and I will support your amendment.
Okay, with amendment, okay, and, so, do you want to make a motion? Okay.
Well, it's, it's just direction.
Okay, direction.
I, I just would, through the mayor, I just want to note for the record, that for folks who can't see, that we do not have any members of public here, and so otherwise, we would be taking public comment, but since there are no members of the public, I will not-
Thank you for taking it.
-ask you to go through that.
Thank you. And then, I guess, guidance in terms of getting environmental review?
Right, so I think the next step, and from staff's perspective, would be to start to reach out to environmental consultants, and once we have selected one, usually, we'll, we'll do an RFP for something like this, and we'll come back with a contract just to confirm with you that we're all on the same page going forward with the scope of work and, and cost and, and time involved.
Okay, good enough.
I'm not persuaded that it's a good use of money and time.
The MND?
Yeah, the mitigated negative declaration.
I think there's a lot of legal risk to not doing it.
Well, let me ask a question of the attorney. If we go ahead and we get sued, end of the day, would we end up paying for our attorney, their attorney, and an environmental consultant to handle it?
If you were sued and the suit was successful, yes, that, that would be the pathway, that flying the ointment is the success of the suit.
And I won't be unfair and ask you what you thought our chances are, okay?
I mean, you know, somebody essentially told us that if we didn't do, like, they, they kind of said, if they, if we don't do an ND or an MND, they might sue.
Who is pursuing a development like this in, in the adjacent town?
But I don't think that stops them in any way from suing us, right?
I'll just say that, can I, just, real quick, just from the town manager's perspective, and, and, you know, knowing enough to be dangerous, Adam's our expert, Teresa's our expert, but based on all the facts that we know today, I would not recommend moving forward if we don't do something environmental, and I think the mitigated deck is the middle ground, I believe that not just, I believe there are multiple parties out there that would challenge us, and I think we would lose that legal challenge, based on what I've heard. I agree, at first, I, I don't want to spend unnecessary money, but if we're going to move forward with this project, I think we have to consider the recommendation from Adam.
And I think, the other thing on the policy ground, I think, in the scheme of ultimately trying what we're, the goal is to attract potentially another hotel, a significant-sized hotel in town, and if, you know, that's sort of an economic development goal, and in the meantime, I think the time and energy to, to putting into that now is something that is going to be worth it in the long run, to achieve sort of that objective, so.
Counselor, you, do you agree? It's 9:30, so can we-
Oh, agreed, uh, thank you.
Carry on?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, good, thank you, we're almost 9:30. So, Adam, do you have marching orders?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Next item is the town manager and council reports.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I believe the council members will be giving my reports today, so I'm going to defer to you.
Okay, Mr. Kinnard.
You'll be happy to know that the Eastman-Telma-Pias intersection will have a crossing guard tomorrow morning, first day of school, thanks to the swap and some responsibility taken on by our own DPW director, which is entirely allowed under the TAM rules. I have spent, I've met with folks from TAM and their consultants, and Peter Brown, and we are looking at possible tweaks to the rules, but none of the tweaks to the rules would result in that being automatically funded because it's so distant from all the others. Essentially, controlled intersections that have lights, that stop traffic, are rated as safe. Uncontrolled intersections that don't have lights, that don't stop traffic, even if it's very slight traffic, are considered not safe and deserving of crossing guards in the scoring system. But we're looking at ways of tweaking that, and I'm working with TAM to try to, to tweak that and make it a better system overall, that's going to take time. Meanwhile, I'm going to show up at the Pixley-Redwood intersection tomorrow morning at 7:30 and see how it goes over there, where we will not have a paid crossing guard tomorrow morning. The job of Executive Director of Transportation Authority of Marin is being finalized, and there are, I believe there are, as of this date, still two candidates. I, with, with the mayor, attended the meeting of the MCC, MCC Legislative Committee, and listened to our senator, and also Assembly Member Chu, David Chu, from San Francisco, on the topic of essentially housing finance techniques, and, and that is being advanced, I think, hopefully, as a, as a tool that could be useful in dealing with our housing shortage. If you want to say any more about that, by all means. I did attend my first meeting of the Marin Telecommunications Agency, and, boy, nothing's simple. I want to tell you, nothing is simple, but I, I'm, I'm rapidly trying to run to keep up to the, keep up to speed and, and the deep agenda that they have and are advancing. And we did reach the MTA's position on the grand jury's report on, on that whole topic. And I'm, I just question, quick question for town managers, have you received the MTA response to the grand jury, and are, are we in alignment, are we going to take a similar position from the town of Corder Madera?
A very similar one, it's actually been drafted and it's ready to go September 17th. I'm happy to send that in advance for review of the council.
I thought the deadline was earlier than September 17th.
We got an extension next time, Rebecca.
Ah-ha, congratulations.
September 20th is our extension now.
Congratulations.
We thought it was important to wait for their report.
Okay, and, there's, there's one more, one more, one more, haven't gone yet. I have a, a quick question for Rebecca, who is also serving as the administrative aide to the MCC MC, have, have we gotten any responses to the request for assignments to the new climate change, or the revitalized climate change committee? Do you know? No? None yet? Okay. Is there going to be a reminder that goes out from Ray Withy or something like that? Fabulous, and I'm done.
Only one thing to report, which is that age-friendly Corder Madera held their annual celebration this past weekend for residents who are ages 90 and up. I'm sad to say I was not able to attend, for that is one of the greatest events ever, and I hear it was a fantastic event, enjoyed by all, that is all.
I had a bunch of meetings, we had a BPAC meeting last week, but you heard about that tonight, so I won't go into that. The Marin Ready Together Group met yesterday, that's the group talking about putting a fire JPA together. There will be a presentation that we went through yesterday, that's going to be at the next council meeting, I believe, in September, if I'm right, correct, Todd?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so that's coming up, but I went through that yesterday. We had a police council meeting where we approved a new salary plan and gave the chief a raise, an extension, and we also had a fire council meeting where we established a trust to invest pension funds, and we approved a response to the grand jury report on fire prevention, and that's it, thanks.
Let me see, the follow-up on Eli's comment, we had 25 honorees who were 90 years old or older on Sunday over at the rec center, and Pauline was still there, as ever, good to see her back, okay? And then, on- or older on Sunday over at the rec center, and Pauline was still there. Nice to see her back. Okay. And then, on the 12th, the flood control board met, added, new members joined it. I'd suggest anybody who wants to get a good overview of our flood control system should watch that presentation, because it sort of went by pump station by pump station, and it was very rewarding to watch. That's it. And then I guess the last thing is the agenda items for the 17th.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, real quick, because we have a minute. We, again, as a council member of Rosio stated, we're going to have a presentation from the FIRE JPA, so that'll be added to this agenda. We're trying to get a discussion about the possibility of forming a sustainability commission and merging that with the flood commission at some point, so we're, we're going to try to get that on the agenda at this next meeting. And the big item will be the noise ordinance, the first review of the noise ordinance. So that's all. Here we go.
Have some people who are very interested in stepping up and volunteering for the sustainability commission.
I have two people in line for that from this council.
Noise ordinance, can I call in sick? I got a nerve ache. So, I guess that means we're done.
Thank you.
Thank you.